Anything on Monday, September 11th? Anything that was accepted on the agenda that may be amended?
So moved.
Yep.
Is there anything that you want to move?
No.
I didn't get me through it.
I mean, is Chet just here for Public Works?
Chet's here for Public, to answer any Public Works questions. I think a lot of it's going to revolve around FEMA, but if we need to expand upon that department, I'm sure Chet can facilitate.
Okay.
Yep.
And then there's all the things that you have to do.
Aye.
And minutes, two of the three are you guys? Are you in charge of them?
Okay, motion to approve the special meeting minutes of September 11th, 3:30. It's just the standard water, road, TIF.
Funding.
Funding mechanism and going up to.
Yeah.
And a motion to, you've got a motion there, Chris?
Notion.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Then we got September 11th, there's another, that's the real full board. That's the evening meeting where all of us were. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I didn't have any.
Nope.
You got a second, Chris?
Second.
On the table except in September 11th, 3:00, is that right?
Aye.
Then Monday at 3:30, September 18th, is the meeting where Chris and I go with everybody from PCI, the Frains Group and VHB. It's just filling us in on a weekly matter of what they're, where they're going at with the TIF and everything, so.
Yep.
You have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any select board member concerns, feedback, something that's not on the agenda?
Nope.
No.
No, pretty much covers me.
There's enough on it.
You okay?
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
Between the people zoomed in and you folks that are here, is there anything on the agenda that you wanted to bring up?
My delinquent tax bill. I moved here in 2022, but I was a resident of New Jersey for 2022 because I moved here the end of July, beginning of August, and I was even out of the state of Vermont numerous times from the end of July until December 31st. And I filed my 2022 taxes and I worked a little bit in the school system here and I paid my Vermont taxes and I paid my New Jersey taxes and I paid the taxes on my house in New Jersey and I paid non-resident tax here. I got my tax bill and I registered to vote like in November. I registered my tar immediately when I got here, thinking that I was a resident, right? Okay, so I get this tax bill from my, in July, that I'm a non-resident. So I call and I say I'm a resident, tell me what my taxes are going to be. Well, you didn't fill out forms such and such and such and such, but I, but for my taxes of 2022, I was not a resident of this state. I was only a resident in 2023.
Okay.
So I have a thing right here that says that I, and then as soon as I found out the two forms I had to fill out, the HI 144 and the HS 122, I filled those out immediately in August and sent them to the state. And I just got the tax bill last week and they took out the difference in the taxes I was more than willing to pay. I was more than willing to pay the difference in August, but nobody could tell me the amount that was due. So then I get penalty for late filed homestead. And then it says right over here on this form, it says, where is it? It says you have told, April, due date, April 18th, 2023. Well, I filed my taxes in February of 2023. You may file up to October 16th, 2023, which I did. So why am I penalized $685?
So you're penalized $685 because if you're looking to file a homestead, okay, most people that are here, like, I've been here more than, you're a different circumstance because you just got.
I don't want any homestead repayment.
No, no, no.
I just want, I don't.
No, so you asked a question, would you like me to finish the answer?
Yes.
Okay, so most people are here and every single year you're supposed to file a homestead. And LaCrecia, as a clerk, is listening in, okay, in the back. So it's kind of different with you because in 2022, you didn't really live here full time.
Right.
You just came here in some point of 2023.
Correct.
And, and, and more than six months, okay?
Right.
Was 2023.
Correct.
You shouldn't have filed a homestead for 2023. You should have still been a non-homestead for this tax bill, okay? And next year, you file your homestead with your taxes that say you're a resident.
But they told me I needed to file this.
No, no, but in the form, ma'am, okay, in the form, it says, have you been a resident for, from like January something to whatever, right, LaCrecia?
It says, were you a resident on April 1st, 22?
Of April 1st of 22. And the answer is no.
No.
And so, I mean, this has got, we got, we got Ted TV on here, so this is a lesson, I guess, for anyone that ever, if you have something like that, it's confusing. Taxes are confusing. You should have marked no, which you weren't a resident.
Right.
And for this year, just because in October or November or August, whatever you said in this, in your, in your lead-up.
Right.
That's when you finally moved here full-time.
Correct.
Okay, so you were not a resident April of 2022.
No, definitely not.
So, so you need to go back to the town. She was not a regis, she got the right tax bill the first time. She was not a resident April 15th or April 1st of 22. She should be getting a tax bill at the cheaper rate because we are one of the few towns that homestead is more than non-homestead, okay?
Right.
So you should be getting the bill and then that will relieve that there. Now, when you do your 2023 taxes into, in April of 2024, it's going to ask you if you were a resident in April 1st of 2023. And once again, the answer is no, right? It's as a.
She would have been.
Yes, I was.
She moved in 20, okay.
Yeah, 2023, she is, yes.
So then that's where you have to make sure whoever does it, yes, and you get it in on time by April 15th, even if you ask for an extension, okay? You ask for an extension until October 15th, you should file those two forms.
I did file them.
You filed them, but you didn't need to file them because you weren't a resident.
But the town told me I needed to file them.
Who told you about the town?
I don't know. When I told them that I was a resident.
Yeah. So can, can, instead of doing this like on, this is a really, it's confusing, can you come to town hall, can you leave the paperwork with us here?
No.
Or, or, or.
And they sent me some.
Or can I take a scan of your tax bill?
Yes, yes.
On my phone?
I've got two tax bills.
And, and can you just send an email to the town manager saying that April of 2022, you are not a resident, okay?
Okay.
You get the non-resident tax bill.
But as of now, the new tax bill, I should be paying because of 23, I'm paying the new one.
Can I, can I see, can I see the tax bills that you have? I mean, this really shouldn't be done here.
I've got the revised one.
You know, but since you're here.
This is Wisters and BCA.
Yeah.
She, she can, from what I understand about the statute is if she's trying to seek forgiveness for the penalty.
There's no forgiveness because.
Then she can do it to the select board under claim of hardship.
I am a resident in 22.
It's not a hardship, right?
It's not a hardship, this is a misunderstanding. This is just a misunderstanding. I have one tax bill here that says they're both for 23, 24, and one of them has her at the homestead education tax rate of the non-homestead tax rate at 225, 2.2581, and this bill is for whatever, okay? And then this tax bill here is for a homestead of 2.47. And I mean, I'm going to say this out loud because there's a lot of people in this town that are second homeowners and they think that they pay a higher tax rate than us. And the difference with what you're bringing to me is your one tax bill of not being a resident of April 1st.
It's less.
Your tax bill is 9,700, but now that when you're a resident, you're 11,100. You're going to get the change to this because you were not a, what are you going to say?
You can't change it back, that's done through the tax department.
She filed the, she filed the homestead declaration and the state gave it to her, that's why there's a revise.
But who told her to file the state?
The only thing you can take away is the penalty.
Yeah. So now you got to, but I mean, who?
That I, I agree with you, you know, that I need to pay the higher rate because I'm a resident of here.
Well, you technically weren't.
You weren't.
But I don't.
So this is not a, so can you just go to the, right, go to the clerk and she'll get you the right, and then you explain this and we'll have a meeting in the right department, which is called the BCA?
No.
Oh, no, the select board?
Yeah.
But first, let's get the paperwork right and we'll waive it. We'll waive the $600 penalty.
Well, thank you.
All right?
No, I couldn't understand it because I tried to do everything correctly.
I don't think anyway, I don't think you really do. We're, we're, we're going to waive the $600.
And I still, I, I plead that I need to pay.
LaCrecia, do we really have to have a warrant meeting to have it on?
No, you can do the thing.
Okay, I'll make a motion to please waive the homestead tax penalty for Sima Smith.
Second.
And they took out.
Aye.
And they took out of my bank account the difference.
I'm not going to get into your banking.
No, I'm just saying that I paid the difference.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'm just saying that this board just approved.
You won't be penalized.
To, to take the penalty away of the $600.
Yep.
Okay, sounds great, thank you.
All right? Thank you. Welcome to Killington as a homestead property.
I think when people register to vote, you should let them know about this because I was unaware when they registered to vote, or when they get a driver's license.
We'll let them know. We'll come out again. We'll come out and do it again.
I'm, I'm.
It's the April 1th that messes it up.
I'm between I agree.
Because you can register to vote in September, but you weren't a resident in April.
You can register when you get your driver's.
Can we move on with the, with the meeting?
Yeah, I know. Okay.
Hey, 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 we did it, we're moving on.
We're all stocked.
We got a long list of.
We got a long.
Yeah, we got Patrick Plank next from AJGA.
Oh, is there anybody else in the, in the citizens?
Liquor coming up.
What? Yeah, yeah.
Do you want to do liquor? Should we move it?
No, no, I, you guys go ahead.
Yeah, she's going to go out.
Okay.
Okay. Steven, do you have anything as a Zoom reader that you wanted to do in public comments? Or Ryan? No, good.
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Okay, are you ready for AJGA?
Sure.
Okay, Patrick, you're up.
All right, well.
David, you should be up too.
You guys all hear me?
Yes.
First off, just want to say thank you for the invitation. The AJGA has been greatly appreciative of the partnership with the town of Killington that we've had since 2010. So we hosted our national junior golf tournament there this June 19th through the 22nd. So we're proposing to have the event return next June 17th to the 20th. And so I did provide the select board a recap with our economic impact from our event this past year, as well as a list of our hotel registrations. But just to recap that, we did have 132 players, 90 boys, 42 girls in our tournament. Players came from 20 states and eight different countries. We estimated the economic impact of this year's event to be $423,782, which surpassed $4 million since our fir. We promoted several different properties in the area for those families to stay at, primarily those in the Killington group, but certainly would open it for any questions that anyone in attendance would have specific to that event.
So, Michael, we received a list of whatever, didn't we have questions the last time?
We didn't know where people were staying the last time they presented it, they just gave us a number.
Mm-hmm. But then, but then we got something else.
We did get some stuff back.
We got something, so I don't have it here in the folder, but also, but then we had questions of questioning of, of the answers on the question of, there was a lot of like unknown where they stayed.
Yep.
And then.
Yeah, so I can, I can address all those. So the, the top attended properties were the Killington Grand O'House, the Killington Mountain Lodge, the Mountain Inn, the Mountain Meadows Lodge and the Snowdine. We had 310 room nights accounted for there. That doesn't count for approximately 96 nights that were reported as being in Airbnbs and vacation homes. So we primarily promote the Killington group properties, but of all those that I just listed, those were all promoted properties. There were about 15 to 20 players that we did not have information on. Based on the time of when we do that survey of the players, it's at the registration when they arrive at the golf course the first day. Several of the players either hadn't checked into their, where they were staying yet, so they didn't know, or, you know, within the nature of us dealing with kids, several of their parents made the reservations and they were just unaware of where that was. So there was no follow-up done on our part for those individuals that didn't know where they were staying at the time.
Okay. What was one of the other? I guess, I guess where it comes down to is we're trying to find out what the real economic impact is, and when you gave us that data sheet, you know, that's like out of the playbook of what they use, say, X amount of people are here and they spend on average X. So, so there's 310 room nights that were booked through five or six local places, and then there's 92 Airbnbs that we're thinking that are within the town or whatever, 92 nights. And, you know, I mean, the question that we're being asked is, is it really, it's not the number that's there, I mean, they're, they're on the golf course most of the day and I know that I've heard from some restaurants that the numbers are down a little bit. So 423, you know, thousand of total impact, you know, the average hotel room is probably at that time like, you know, let's say $145 or whatever for a night. At the 310 nights, it's 44,950 bucks. I'm still trying to find the other $400,000. But that's all. And I mean, and then the other question goes back to David Bauer, Boya, is that, you know, three years ago, have we, have we been looking at, you know, what, what this does to the golf course? Because there was also the question from the board, what's the impact on the golf course?
I think, and, and also volunteers.
And volunteers.
Yep.
You know, and the stipend. So David, were you prepared to do that?
I can tell you about, I mean, volunteers is, and we do, and, and obviously Steve can speak to this because he has direct involvement with the volunteers as with Jim Harrison. My understa, I give around 40 to 50, what we do is when someone volunteers for a morning or an afternoon session, we provide a voucher, which allows them to play at the golf course Monday through Thursday and Sunday after 1:00 PM, so it's not at our peak times. And we give about on a Tuesday, Wednesday, around 50 of those, so 25 in the morning, 25 in the afternoon, and then about 25 of those vouchers go out on, to Thursday, which is the last day when the field gets cut. So direct involvement from that, other than you do provide vouchers as well on each day, which the AJGA pays for. So that is a direct economic involvement. I have numbers for food and beverage just today to give you an idea. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, we do the equivalent food and beverage business that we would do on a good Saturday, which is, and it's not quite as good because of course as, we don't have the, what's it called, the alcohol content. We do, we do a lot of food during the week that we do, you know. So in terms of how it affects the golf course, that's, 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 that's pretty much it. In terms of condition-wise, there's no direct effect to the golf course. You know, are we spending more time getting the golf course back afterwards? No, because the, the kids are respectful, they look after the property. Every one of them has a little sand bucket that they use to fill their divots, you know, and I can say that there's no direct, in terms of, you know, conditioning. We, there are extra hours, my staff, food and beverage staff, maintenance staff, we probably do end up paying some overtime that week because of the length of the days. But again, you've got to weigh up the economic in terms of what it does to the town. So I think there's a, there's a back and forth that needs to be discussed. And Jim, I understand what you're saying, I don't know whether we'll ever get the direct, you know, the actual number to the dollar and cents of what it brings in to the town, but up until, you know, if, if we find an alternative, great, but as of right now, I still think for that week in June, it's, it's probably the best option we have for a golf tournament within the bounds of Killington.
Okay, so we, we were just asking for numbers and I don't, you know, so you said 50 out on Tuesday, 50 out on Wednesday, 25 in the morning, 25 in the afternoon?
Yeah.
And then on Thursday? And then Thursday? So let's just say it's 125 vouchers that are given out.
Yep.
And the voucher.
Single rounds.
Single rounds, they're not, it's just for a single. This is what we're, I mean, we just don't have it. And so what is the voucher worth for a Monday through Thursday and after 1 o'clock? Is it a 75 round of golf? I mean, we're just trying to do our job here, guys, that's all.
I mean, it is, you add quite a value to that, Kim, because there's nothing to say that that person would have played anywhere. They're, they're playing at the golf course because they have the vacuum. If, if you want to put a dollar amount to that voucher, it's worth a hundred dollars.
Okay.
Someone to play at the golf course, it's worth a hundred dollars. But would that person play there anyway?
I don't know who the vouchers are going to. Do you get, do you get 125? This is like us looking at as a board, so you're giving out 125 vouchers and I would believe that it's going to say on there that they're from the AJGA, so you can track them.
Correct.
You know, so how many of the 125 vouchers are you getting back?
At the end of the year, I'll count them up and let you know, because I have them all.
Okay. Because I mean, so it's just $12,500 worth of vouchers going out. That's not a lot, okay? But we're trying to do our job and know what the economic impact is.
One thing that he didn't mention, the voucher doesn't include a cart.
Yeah, I know.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, you got 125 times 25 bucks a cart.
Yeah, I'm just, but we're just trying to figure out what, and here we are again and we're just getting the answers out or whatever.
I would.
I mean, how much is the event for, so the town is paying how much for the event? Or the resort?
It's 20K.
19,500 is what the resort sponsorship is.
And then doesn't the resort have to also give in trade as rooms as well?
Correct, they do provide lodging for our staff.
Okay, and what's that figure?
We just got that bill, Michael, right? It was like $6,000.
I think it was around $7,000.
$7,000 and it was split 50/50 between the town and the resort. So it was like 30, so.
So the cost is 27,000 for this.
Yeah.
Event, plus.
Yeah.
Plus a few.
This is what we're trying to find out because it's in the contract.
I would really like to go back to the chamber and have them conduct and, and just.
Okay.
And feel what the impact is on everything and, you know, see how they support it too.
This is better than when it started, because when it first came on, AJGA was booked on a weekend.
I know.
And David can tell you, on a, on a good weekend, what do you have, about 130, 140 people on a, like a good Saturday?
Yeah, between, between a Saturday and a Sunday, we'll do, there are 300 players and Friday again is very busy, so another 100 left.
So there's really no extra work for the tournament because they got to do it for the people on the weekends anyway.
Yeah, but there's some, I mean, you're saying they go into overtime that week, trying to host this thing.
Well.
All I'm trying to do is, I know, it's $19,500. That's, it's, it's, you got the one, $19,500 that the resort kicks in, and then with the vouchers, there's $12,500 there, and then there's the rooms or whatever that is, $7,000. So it's 26,500 plus the vouchers. And I get the bit of that.
The vouchers are.
But the vouchers, yeah, I, I get it, but it's there.
They're not 12,000.
So it's 26,500. So if I'm going to throw this at you, David, you know, is this such a great event that we're going to take the 26,500 completely out of Green Mountain National Golf Course?
Well, that's, and that's up to the board to decide. I mean, if it was my business and I was running Green Mountain National as, as my own business, I would not have this event. I'll be plain and honest, as a golf course operator, it doesn't, it doesn't do the golf course as a, as an entity any good, but what does it bring to the town? That's, that's the question which we don't have.
Yeah, and I think that's what our chamber's for.
Correct, yeah, and I, I agree with that. I think if there's some further digging of evidence and we can, we can get some truer numbers, then it's, it's well worth the effort to do that.
Jim, if I could add one thing to, you, you had asked regarding how we arrived at that economic impact number. Part of that number also does include 161 practice rounds that our players played in advance of the tournament starting. So, you know, players coming in prior to, to get eyes on the golf course. So that's, that is factored into that number.
So this is what I'm smiling about, Patrick, okay? We just asked for an economic impact and could I please just get all this information? Like, there's 163 rounds and David, what are they paying? And blah, 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 blah. Instead of me sitting here in a meeting and dragging step by step out. It should be really easy. In the contract from AJGA, it says that after each, each year of the event, you'd give us a economic impact and I would like, you know, hey, boom, 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 this is what you're paying, 19,500, $7,000 in rooms, blah, blah, blah. This is what you're getting, 163 rounds of golf during the week before or whatever, leading up to, which those room nights may not be in those because the, the room night you gave me may only be during the tournament, Patrick. It may not be the, the 163 rounds prior, you know? That's, we're just doing our job here, trying to find out what it is.
And is there any of this, is there any of this we can attribute to marketing in terms of people all of a sudden come to Green Mountain National because, oh my God, the AJGA was here? Or I saw this marketed, or we came here? Is there anything that we could save to that or not?
Who are you asking? I can't.
Both of you, I, does anybody say, oh my God, the AJGA was here, I had to come here and play?
We get, I mean, we get previous athletes that, that come and play the facility and say that they were here in a certain year and they played the event.
Okay.
But that's anecdotal and at best, and, and that's the information I get. I haven't had 20 people come into my shop and say they're playing the event, they're playing the course because the AJGA was here.
Good to know. This is what I want to know.
You know, or what kind of advertising the AJGA does for sending out, I think is Chris getting to it, Patrick, like, you know, we've got the AJA and it's at Killington this weekend, it's in, you know, the Olympic Club in San Francisco next weekend, whatever, okay? You know, I, I think you do some advertising.
We don't do any paid advertising, so all our advertising is through our social media channels, which is highlighted in that fulfillment report that's provided.
Right.
But certainly every event is highlighted each week individually on social media, so, you know, there certainly is an aspect to that.
Yeah.
That can be attributed.
Good.
So I think we should just go to the chamber. I like the event, I just need to say that when I have a contract that says, I need an annual update, I need an annual update.
It's good to know that you want those specifics because I certainly have all the numbers and what we use to calculate that algorithm, but we typically just provide that total number. But it, it includes hotel room nights, practice rounds, any golf carts that were rented by handicap spectators. Uh, we estimate a $45 food spend per person.
That's what we want to see.
Yeah.
And, um, where are your most successful events, out of curiosity?
So our most successful events, it depends on what you're, you know, using as a barometer for success there. But typically they are in towns in similar sizes to Killington. Um, you know, small towns, Kentucky, you know, anywhere that's outlying a, a major city where, um, you know, we're not competing with another major event at the same time.
And how many stops do you have on your tour this way?
We have a hundred and, a hundred and 30.
Okay.
So out of a hundred and 30 stops, where's Killington rank?
What are you, what are you using as the barometer there?
Do you guys have one? No, like, well, so like.
Attendees, like, you know, spectators, like where are your?
Yep. So I oversee the entire Northeast for the AJGA, which is Washington DC through Montreal. We only have two events that are the field size of this event. Uh, so we have the one here and then one in Sugarloaf Mountain Resort. So in terms of attendees, this is the largest attended. Uh, we had 132 spots, but we probably had 450 applicants vying to get into the event. Um, very often it's families that have had multiple, you know, sons or daughters come through and they annually return to play in this event. Uh, I know the event's been a, a variety of different times in the year. I know when we were over 4th of July, we had a lot of families that would turn it into a family vacation. Over 4th of July, I think, I think a lot of them still do. Uh, I, I think there's a large draw of the location of the event because we do not have an event in Boston. Um, so it's, you know, the closest draw to Boston for anybody that's trying to tour those schools. Uh, they will come and play in that event. It's very heavily attended by California players. Um, you know, both our boys and girls champion, we're both from California. Um, and, and obviously, but the representatives, representation of 20 different states coming. I mean, that's on the higher side from what we would see compared to other events. Um, so i- in terms of tourism based, you know, this is the largest in the Northeast, uh, other than our event in Sugarloaf.
Okay.
And then like when you said the full field or whatever, that's the 142 or whatever, 44?
A hundred, a hundred and 32, correct.
A hundred and 32. So in the other places where you say this is full, there's what, what at the 70 or 60, whatever?
So the majority of our rents are either 78 players or 96 players.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll reach out, I'll reach out to the KPA.
Yeah, I got a lot more than I, I got more of what I was really looking for. And, you know, to be honest with you, maybe the other towns and we've put up with those sheets or whatever, but, you know, we're, we're asking more and more questions. That's all.
Yeah. And, and just to provide some additional insight from a, a sponsorship involvement. The sponsorship for this event, just because of the relationship and where that's evolved from the, the tax dollars previously funding that sponsorship is about half of what the sponsorship is for all those other events in our region. So, um, from a, a value standpoint, it's certainly a, a much greater deal from that standpoint.
Yeah, I believe it was up around $30,000 a while ago.
Yeah. So our, our sponsorship now is at 40.
Okay. So.
So this event's essentially been grandfathered in and we've supplemented some of that sponsorship through additional sponsors that we've brought in.
Okay. And then it's supposedly gonna be what, what time are we looking for? June something to the 20th?
It'd be the same dates as it was this year, same week, so June 17th to the 20th.
Yeah. Okay. It's had a slow time of year.
Yeah. Okay. I have, I have a lot more information.
Now.
Or I have the information I was looking for. So, um, Chris is just, or Michael's gonna run by the KPA. Just verify, hey, um, if you can send Michael the list of the top five or six hotels that you said. And then we can get a hold through the KPA and just say, hey, what was, you know? And just verify it. That's all.
Yeah, Patrick, you know your, your audience well now, so you can just send me as much data as you want to and I can present it to the decision makers.
We like data.
What's that?
We like data.
Okay. Yeah, I'll send you everything we've got and certainly, you know, provided that it's a positive outcome. If there's anything further that we can do when we collect that data this year that would help for future, you know, certainly let me know in that. We can put that in the contractor, uh, if we need to ask, you know, where their Airbnbs are. I, I would assume the majority of them are in close proximity of the course, but, um, we can do some further questioning there if we need to.
Thank you.
My last question, how'd you get into with the AJGA? Were you one of the golfers and then?
I was not. I actually ran collegiate track and field and wanted to work in sports.
Okay.
And so I've been with the AJGA for 10 years now, so overseeing this region and, and very familiar with the event for.
What's your handicap?
I'm like a 28.
All right. All right. You belong with us. Thanks a lot. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for having me.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it a lot.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Darren. Okay. Do we need Whit for the speed limit reduction?
Well, Whit's here. Whit's not here to speak on the speed limit reduction, although he's definitely through to it. Uh, I can, I'll start off the conversation. We've got two speed studies in front of us. That was done by the previous planner. Um, one's for River Road and one is for Killington Road. The first one, River Road, the report summarizes speed data for 85th percentile, 10 mile per hour pace, average speed and speed limit range that was calculated from traffic data collected from the Grotland Regional Planning Commission during the seven day count period from Friday, May 27th through Thursday, June 2nd, 2022. The data included within this report is what the Vermont Local Roads Program 2016 Setting Speed Limits, a guide for Vermont towns advises municipalities to collect to help determine their traffic ordinance for town highways. The recommended maximum speed limit of 25 miles per hour, again, we're talking about River Road, is safe and reasonable for both directions considering the roadway geometrics and the rural and residential nature of a budding land use. The 25 mile per hour recommendation is within five miles per hour of the captured 85th percentile speed, which is preferred in setting speed limits. See further details in definition below. And then I, I won't do that again for the second one, but the other one is, is east, is for Killington Road. It, the language is along the same, except it was, it did kind of, um, get away from the 85th percentile, although there, uh, the, the other planner did advise, um, traffic calming measures that, that enabled the 30 mile per hours to be met.
So let's stick with the River Road right now.
Sure.
River Road is 25 miles an hour from from the paved then, and then it goes to 30? 35 on the gravel. I, I always thought it would have been the other way or whatever. So all we said back in 2022, whatever, is that we're gonna make the whole road 25 miles an hour, especially since the paved road section is going past the library, um, the rec field and the town hall. You know, most of the times like that, that's like going through a school area and it's 25 miles an hour. So I don't have a problem with that. Okay?
Nope.
Now, the next one is the Killington Road. And the Killington Road currently is 35 miles an hour?
35.
35. And this was suggesting to go down to 30 miles an hour, correct? Not to 20, 30 miles an hour? And this was, you know, there was a few things that brought this conversation up is, um, one, you know, we've got people doing way more than that on the Killington Road at times. Two, um, we're looking at all this roadwork going in the, you know, the Killington forward. And one of the things is the, the Village Center and some other funding mechanisms. And, you know, so the board back in 21, 22 asked for this study to be done. And, um, here we have it today. And, you know, I don't have anything against of lowering the speed limit from 35 to 30. But I also agree in here that there's got to be some other measures of calming. And one of the biggest things that when I was on the board in 2000, whatever, part of 10, 11 and part of 12 or 11, 12 and part of 13, was the traffic lights. There were traffic lights at Dean Hill Road. And there was two sets of Dean Hill Road, one before the market of Dean Hill and then one, and then one after or whatever. And there was also a traffic light up at Choices and the Outback Pizzeria. And when I was on the board back in 11 or 12, and they failed or whatever. And I had oppositions from other board members at that time. We don't have it in our budget, okay? And then arguing about, but traffic lights work? I'm asking the police.
They work. Yep. Creates breaks in the traffic.
You know, and in this, and it calms, and this new, this new road that we're doing in Killington Forward, you know, this is where Chris and I, with many meetings that were warned on this study and everything, because we were meeting with VHB even before the TIF, because we were looking at redoing the road. Chris and I were pushing in these meetings for traffic lights and other calming measures. So like crosswalks, more crosswalks like they have, you know, just above West Hill Road where you hit the button and the lights start flashing or whatever. And, you know, we, I know some people argued on Dean Hill Road by Casey's Caboose going over that there should be a traffic, one of those there. But then there was argument about why it can't or it can't because it has to have a, a sidewalk to a sidewalk or something like that. So, you know, we've got to look into just, I'm gonna say yes to lowering it down to 30, but we have to look into more of the calming measures or whatever.
We do. And I don't mean to derail you here, your thoughts, but to add to it is we also, at the same time period, moved what the offsets were, okay? So that the, uh, offsets from the front property line for businesses to move closer to the road. So we create more of a streetscape with it versus set further pack. And then when we were going through this process, we also talked about lowering the speed limit so that it was more comfortable to be outside or more comfortable to be on a sidewalk as part of it. Um, oddly enough, I just came back from, uh, Dewey Beach this weekend and very similar, they have built up their streets, okay? They've come in, two lanes going in each direction. They have these, uh, traffic lights, uh, walk, crosswalk lights you mentioned up all over the place. And pedestrians have the right of way. And you're just gonna travel at 30 to get through the entire area. And it's like, that's, as we continue this path, okay? We have to start putting these calming measures in place. Building a freeway is not gonna be the answer.
And, and when we started back in 2013 vote, that was the year that we went from a constable group to a police department group. And I think your first year was just you?
Yeah.
And then we got to two? And then in the recent year and a half, we're three. And you just hired, your fourth is starting when?
Third officer starting.
Well, there's four total, to- total in the department. So four officers and one police chief. Okay? So we're building that up. But when it started in 2013 or that vote, it was, you know, we don't know what the budget's gonna be going ahead. And, you know, and we don't know how we're gonna get coverage because one person at the time or two people at the time or even now three, there's no way that you can cover seven days a week, 24 hours a day.
Yeah, 55 miles of road. It's, uh, in any one case, we take an officer off the road for, you know, we had a case, search warrant seized. A lot, a lot of stolen property from a local storage place and, uh, took an officer off the road for almost two weeks to inventory and, and that entry. And we had at the same time, a week later, we had a domestic assault, took two officers off the road for, for seven hours. And wanted to break for another domestic assault call. So the nature of calls have changed. It's not just traffic enforcement, DUI stuff anymore. It's, it's now unfortunately changed to burglaries, larcenies, domestic assault type, um, type cases. So those do take officers off the road. So instead of being on the road creating visual deterrents, they're in the office typing out the David's search warrants and stuff like that.
So for the town manager, my suggestion is like what this board has instructed the previous chief, that now this fire chief on the fireside, to get us so that we have an A, M, T like on and, and, and you're coming, or you've got a plan in front of us, that you work something because really this town does need to have coverage. I mean, we're moving into, you know, skier visits are picking up from 10 years ago. Okay? Summertime is picking up from 10 years ago. You know, um, the Killington Road needs to be patrolled. But then on the same time, if we can't have coverage the whole time, the state police are not, and there's nothing, I'm not making anything bad about the state police, but they've, they're short officers themselves and they're not gonna be able to be here 24 7 also.
A lot of times they act as our backup and they do, you know, they do a room call, 40 minutes, could be an hour. Um, you know, that, that, you know, a lot of stuff too, we had almost 200 phone calls that came into our answering service last month, month of August. That, all those 200 phone calls, we'd fire a phone call back. So you have the admin side of things, any phone calls, plus there are over 700 cases for the year, over the over a thousand, I think, um, from December. So it's a lot of it, not just on the road anymore. It's a lot of it is deeper.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna also, I mean, do we need a motion to approve these?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm gonna make a motion for us to move forward with the speed reduction as part of this overall plan that we're talking about. So if you had a second on my motion of approving.
Yeah, you have a second.
Both roads.
Both roads.
Just making sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
As presented in the speed limit study.
Anything else you bring up?
Can I touch on that? The anti-comming mechanisms are important with that because the nature of Killington, a lot of transient population. So it's hard to educate the motor in public because the very next day, it's a, it's a new person to try to educate. And the very next day, the very next week. So it's not just the local population, it's transient in nature. So it is hard to, so calming mechanisms, stoplights, stuff like that will certainly help.
We pushed all that and when the road gets redone, those will be going in.
So I mean, I keep on for years and years and I've spoken to you, like, when I go down to Northampton, Mass. or whatever, for picking up a kid from college and I get into Chester and around Christmas time, you know, I can come on up and the speed limit is supposed to be 35 miles an hour ahead. Where I'm at this current time is 41, but as I'm coming in, it, it's red and it says naughty. Okay. No, it says naughty and it tells me. And then as I start coming down to where I'm supposed, where I'm supposed to be at the 35, it comes down and it says nice. Okay? And it really gets the driver's attention. And I'd like to see us when we're, we haven't done the complete Killington Road. We're just designing the road now from East Mountain Road to the lookout. But we are gonna be taking over from the lookout up, okay? And I'd really like to get us to see that we start installing some of this stuff along the road. Of, we have one up by Mary Lou's coming down. And then we have one coming up. And, and, and I think us as a board, as we're going into these meetings and stuff and, and, and the design, that there should maybe be another two or whatever.
Mini technology too. They do, let's see, the old technology, they do car counts, highest speed, lowest speed, time of day. It's all cloud based. You can sit and you can access all these traffic numbers.
You know, and, 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 you know, I go down to Long Island and all of a sudden it's, you know, my cell phone that's plugged into hands free with the map or whatever will say, warning, red light camera ahead. We should be looking ahead and, and getting, when we get this stuff, getting that technology. Because you know what? Even still, like, it's, it's, it's not like I'm gonna blow the red light, but some people like, some people might. But if it comes up and says, red light, and then it takes a picture, if you go through, you get a ticket.
Yeah, this isn't, this is surely not designed to be a money grab and I think that needs to be publicly said. If, you know, our goal is to get traffic moving at 30 miles an hour, not at.
Multi-prong approach.
It is. And it's just, so, you know, we're not trying to fund a new town hall.
No.
Okay.
And I don't know if there's really a camera there. It just comes up and says, red light camera ahead. You know, speed camera or whatever ahead.
Um, I don't, I'm not familiar enough with the road, didn't know how many crosswalks we have. But I've seen a lot of the towns putting up the new stop yield signs in the middle of the road, seem to kind of slow people down.
We have a problem here in the winter time, the most of, you know. But, you know, we got, I, 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 I think, well, this is just one of the little starts of lowering it down and then getting out. And when this gets down to this here, how long does it take for this to go into effect?
Uh, I can research that and find out.
I think it's like 30 days. That we, 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 we passed this now, then it's like 30 days. And, um, but we still need to get police on the road. And I understand that, you know, your police are, it's not, they're not just there for speeding tickets. You get off to other things and, you know, I want you there when, um, you know, you know, I've called you. I had a car come fly and by me at 65 miles an hour. And, you know, it was actually a company working here and I'm not gonna say anything about who, but, you know, I finally found where they parked and then they, you know, and, and, and let them know and call up their management. But you can't be there all the time.
And if this is a, if this is a amendment to an ordinance, it could be the 60 days and then the right to appeal and all that.
Yeah.
I'll follow up with it.
Yeah.
Just so you're not surprised by it.
So, so I mean, we've got a motion to do this.
On favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
And, but I really like you to get together with trying to figure out like, you know, how we can have, you know, locations and, and, and work out a plan. Locations and 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 work out a plan like chief, fire chief has given to us to. You know, we we gotta get everything on board.
Great.
Do we wanna, I mean, it's something big, is there anybody in the public out here that wanna say something or online that wants to say something? Does anybody online have anything to talk about or 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 any points on, since it is our roads, on the traffic calming measures? Ryan? Saying nothing, Steve?
I just think that that a couple of things I've talked with some people in town, like some of your old uh police cars. Just have them parked off on the side and it'd slow people down, I mean, that's like almost a no-brainer, um. You know, cars just go too darn fast on on the Killington Road and Wit, I hardly ever see your guys on the Killington Road, I don't care. What day of the week it is, um, you know, I'm up here most of the s- most of the year. And I'm kind of appalled that I don't see more police presence on Killington Road, um, where are you guys?
Well, we're Route Four, East Mountain Road, Sunrise, North Sherburne, Coffee House Road. Pyco, Alpine Drive, Killington Road, Westville Road, Riverside Roads off of Dean Hill.
River.
River Road. So some, you know, we try to spread out the schedule as much as possible, but with one officer on, we don't really work more than one. Maybe two, there was some overlap there, but if you have an officer running radar on Westville Road or East Mountain Road, you know, it's one officer.
Well, Wit, this, the past two weekends, we had um the mountain bikers this week, last week, we had the Spartan guys. Lot of traffic, you guys were nowhere to be found on on Killington Road at all.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna back up here, on Spartan Race Weekend. The traffic was mainly over on the.
Bear Mountain.
Bear Mountain roadside there and because of the flood, Steve, that we had on um East Mountain Road there. The road was closed from Skyship to Bear Mountain Road. And this board approved for the fire department and the police department. Cause we were opening up the road for just the bus there, but I do know that I saw Wit at different times of the day. Taking away from, cause then somebody would replace him and I know like. I know it, but Wit, tell me what your Saturday, when it started and when it ended and what you did, Saturday Spartan Race.
Uh, an officer was on a quarter, I, all three of us were on throughout the weekend, um. Two officers were covering, tracking detail over East Mountain Road and Route Four, assisted by the fire department to get the coverage. And um, I think it was five, five AM to ten PM, um, and then Sunday was six AM to also ten PM. So I came out as well, so there's three of us, cause again, checking other calls throughout the town, um. So I was working as well, so all three of us were on throughout the weekend, not only in traffic detail, but also controlling the the normal town duties.
And then you were on River Road because of?
Yeah, then I went down to River Road um for the Fairy Tale Festival, so we're covering that as well.
And I know Sunday that I saw you, I ca- I was away on Saturday, but I know Sunday I saw. You or somebody else going up and down the Killington Road a couple of times.
I saw him out at Bear Mountain on Sunday.
Yeah.
So.
So part of the problem, Steve, on that weekend there or whatever is because of the flood or whatever and we did have him over because. The town did not have the road open yet and it was only for a bus and we were looking not to have the accident there. It is a town road and we went from that there, but I know that they were taking breaks from there and making rounds around the town. So how many miles of road, I see your hand, Ken, how many roads of, how many miles of road?
Fifty-five.
Yeah, so it's kinda hard to always be and then the problem you have is he's always on the Killington Road.
Right.
You know. And then you get the other people say, why aren't you always, why aren't you over by me in North Sherburne? Why aren't you on me in Killington East?
Spread out the best we can.
You know, I, so Ken has his hand up.
So, so I came in uh before you got started about the speed control uh issue. But um I did hear, I think you vote, I think you vote from thirty-five to thirty.
On Killington Road.
On Killington Road for future plans, so if we're not enforcing thirty-five. What can just do to go to thirty?
We are enforcing the thirty-five.
So going back to the Spartan Race event, okay, we're talking about our police force doing traffic control over East Mountain Road. Okay, and I bring this up because I almost got taken out, okay, at five o'clock in the afternoon crossing the crosswalk. That they had the fire station, by the speeder. I waited until the traffic stopped both directions and some guy came flying through doing at least. Sixty, seventy miles an hour, okay? We we called for the patrolman, okay, and we got no response. We called a number which was what, incident service? And we were told that that incident service leaves a message in their box through their checkbook. We called, okay, the state police because apparently they coordinated who's on duty, who's not on duty. And we asked who was on duty and they said nobody.
Well, we're on trap, traffic detail.
So, so was that speed control or is that traffic control? Okay, cause then when I got home, okay, made it home, okay, I got in my car. And I get four passes up and down Killington Road, I did not see one patrol car, not one person at K one. All the way down to the visitor center, four passes, not one patrol car. I came around the back of this building, we've got a speed control device that's folded up. And we have a patrol car sitting there, take the patrol car that I'm paying taxes for. That they put it at Wobbly Barn, put it at the old fire station, nobody can sit there, that they parked the car there. Take the one at a residence place which we sold to and was supposed to take the details off and instead he puts a tarp over it. Take that car, put it at the new town office on Route Four, tape this speed control sign, post it someplace. That's one thing, the second thing is, okay, that Spartan event, okay, did not come up. Okay, in a moment's notice, how long was that Spartan event planned? Six months, a year in advance? And where is the coordination between the resort, Spartan, the town, okay, to have, okay, speed control of these events? And Jim, I disagree with you too as far as the traffic over on East Mountain Road, okay? There was a boatload of traffic over here on this Killington Road, okay, and not one patrolman. Nothing, there was no control over here whatsoever, this is the second time I'm bringing up speed control in this office. Okay, and it's about time, okay, that we address it, I don't know how going from thirty-five to thirty. Is going to fix what we got.
So why don't we go to fifty and that way we don't have speeding, Ken?
We can do that, because they do that anyway.
We already had our motion, we already passed it down to thirty, I understand that you're upset about it, I understand that you got hit.
Upset, I'm lucky to be here, that was a near miss.
Okay, but, you know, maybe you should get an Apple tag and give it to Wit or whatever or the police department because. They're not going to be, and that was the conversation here, with three officers, they're not going to be. At every single spot with fifty-five miles of roads to be covered. Yeah, you know what, I used to go to from San Jose, California to Truckee and they had the car up on the hill. On a- on 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 the freeway there and everyone knew there was no cop in there, so if you, i- i- if that's what you want. Let's just start parking, but instead of, but but Ken, like Ken, Ken, Ken. I listened to you for a while, but instead of keep on attacking like, why are you doing something, you're almost like, why are you doing this if you can't? But we just went through, Chris and I and Steve and saying we wanted to do other calming measures. So we were giving, we looked at the town manager and said, go to the police chief and let's start finding out a way of getting. A better staffing way of taking care of the road, but I'm sorry you almost got hit. But I think you didn't hear that part, all you heard was, you're gonna lower it to thirty miles an hour. You didn't hear us say, putting back in the traffic light, you didn't hear us say, putting in crosswalks on Dean Hill Road where you were. That there is a more flashing thing or whatever, you didn't hear us say, work with the police chief. To try to get a little more coverage and we just hired on a new officer. Hopefully that's gonna help them out to get more coverage and specifically for some of the higher. Traffic roads, including Killington Road, that's what we're here for, but you just picked on. Why are you wasting your time doing this?
No.
This is, now you said, why are you doing this and it's not gonna do anything.
What is the benefit when we're not enforcing the current speed?
Well, there there's speed tickets that go out or whatever.
And and the other thing that I did hear, cause I did hear all of that, okay, the other thing that I've heard. Okay, was that this has been going on, okay, even talking about these measures, okay, since twenty-one, twenty. Okay, twenty-one, twenty-two, here it is, twenty-three, okay, and it's still not in place. Okay, and the the problem is continuing and getting worse, the other thing too. Okay, I would like some kind of an answer or response, okay, as to when special events are planned. What is the process, okay, that the town goes through, okay, in the planning with the event, okay, the resort and the town.
But can you?
When I was on the DRB, okay, and new, okay, program came in or new development or project or something or other. We gave it to the fire department, we gave it to the police department for them to do very soon before this was pulled. Okay, so we have a special event that brings in out of states, it brings in a bunch of people, the World Cup. Okay, it's flooded and came with stadiums up there, Rutland.
Ken, this was a unique situation, the roads were lost during a storm. The meeting before, we didn't even know if we could get the roads open, we had to bring in Jersey barriers to make them safe. So I think it was a great effort by both the town and the resort to work together to accomplish getting these people taken care of.
The town, hang on, give just a minute, excuse me, we've already said, okay, there are three officers in town. An event was planned that brought in thousands of people. Where was that share, okay, in controlling the speed, in controlling pedestrians? Where was the resorts, okay, input, where was the town's planning when this event came to town? And brought in all these people from out of state and the testosterone for an event like that is flowing. Okay, where was the planning? I was on the DRB, I was chair, I had the plan, okay, with these folks, the fire department and rightfully so. Cause I did it for forty-four years and what I did, okay, fire department, police department, they had their say. Okay, as to what needed to happen with that development, okay, here's an event. Okay, for a weekend here, a weekend there and four days here, okay, where was the planning?
So why don't you go to the planning commission and the DRB commission like you did when you were there? Okay, and ask them, what are they doing, and I think this board will ask you to go to them and find out what is going on. But to be quite fair, Ken, no, 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 no.
That's not my job, you're the select board, okay, you.
So then why are you here, if that's not your job, you're here making a complaint, but you, so listen, you were the chair of the, you you. Listen, you were the chair of the DRB, okay, so what you're asking us right now is, where is the resort funding money? To put police officers or whatever on the road, is that what you're asking for, for better coverage?
I'm not asking for it, I'm asking where was it?
Okay, so Wit, when you, when Ken was the DRB chair just some two years ago. Did you have, are are you working in the same way now as you were then or was it that much better when Ken was the chair?
I'm I'm not sure, there's not a difference right now.
I mean, it's the same coverage as when you were the DRB chair, Ken.
More coverage this, uh, that weekend than there normally are, than normally is.
I I mean, but like you're sitting here and you're saying, but when you were the chair of the DRB, this is what you did and I just have to sit here and say. I I don't, I don't agree with that.
This is what I did as a planning board, okay, I'm asking where was the planting, planning, okay? To hold this event in this town, okay, with all of these outsiders, okay, with the police, with the fire department, with the select board.
And I'm asking you that when you were the chair of the DRB, no, 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 I'm asking you. What is different, when you were the chair of the DRB or if you ever were on the planning commission? If you did such a great job that it was happening then, the plan should be in effect. I don't see a plan for that, I don't see it.
There you go.
But but you were there, so why didn't you do it?
Because I'm not on the DRB and it's not my responsibility.
But when you were, but when you were, it's the same.
It's not the same.
The Spartan Race has been here for how many years?
Okay, and where's the planning for it?
Where was the planning when you were on? Where were the, where where was it when you were on?
Guys, hang on, I just gotta ask one question, we do this every weekend during the winter, okay? So, and this is less bodies here than what's here in the winter, okay, so our assets. Yes, were tied up because we had a road problem, okay, that they dealt with, with the fire department. And so to me, we do this every weekend, we should know how to do this, every weekend, and I think we do it well, okay? Because of one bad speeder, okay, guy coming down the road, I don't think it's fair to chastise the fi- the police department over it.
Chris, one bad speeder, why are we having conversations about dropping the speed limit?
Well, to be honest with you, the reason why we dropped the speed limit and Chet, you were against dropping the speed limit. So because we had a TIF district that was coming in and someone said that was, just tell everybody, why why were we here?
The reality was when we were talking about putting the uh affordable housing in and the TIF district went all the way down the road, there was a benefit. Um, that certain qualifications that we met, if we lowered it to thirty to make it more village-like. Um, that became paused for a while when those, when they moved the TIF district all the way up to the top. Um, and it didn't come down the road anymore, but that, this has been going on, um, Darryl did do the study about a year and a half ago. Um, and we looked at going to thirty at that point, so that was one of the primary reasons. And the fact is, as this development continues and as Killington Road gets built with sidewalks on both sides and additional crosswalks. Lowering the speed limit and adding more uh traffic calming measures is going to be the correct way to do it, we're just doing the speed limit first. Cause that's the low hanging fruit.
Let's hope Norrie gets taken out of the end.
With three of us and it's not an excuse, it's the, it's the reality, that there's three officers. From, it was twenty-four hours a day, there's three officers, there's fifty-five miles an hour, there's seven days a week. We're, you know, we have an officer on seven days a week, spread out, trying to cover fifty-five miles to the town, all three of us can't be on twenty-four seven. So, you know, we've had another officer starting, hopefully it'll help some of that to spread out some more, but again, we have all these other cases, like I said earlier, to take up officers off the road. You know, uh, you know, this coming budget cycle, you know, I'm gonna do some numbers and probably put in front of the roster or two. If that's the direction we need to go, it's gonna cost some money, but again, even we, we could have five or six officers, we can't be in. Every inch of the fifty-five miles of road twenty-four seven, it's like, there's gonna be speeders unfortunately, all we can do is the best we can with three of us.
How many state troopers is the state short right now?
The last year, it's almost fifty.
Okay. So, we're all fighting this battle and it's like, you know, someone could be speeding on, Ken, someone could be speeding on Route Four too.
Right, they, and they do.
I know, so.
The question is, okay, I don't need anybody to sit on my road. I don't need anybody on on Roaring Brook Road, we don't need anybody on Dean Hill Road, there's no event happening there.
I would tell you, there's some people that are gonna tell you, argue with you.
There were burglaries on Dean Hill Road, there were burglaries on Roaring Brook Road and they were complaining. That there was no police up there at that time, cause you weren't there the minute my car got broken in. I mean, that's what the complaints were going and what Wit is trying to say and Chris is trying to say is. You know, they can't be in every single spot when something happens. So, you know, there, the the state police have all this, you know, Rutland has it, you know, they've got speeding down there and everything. You can't have a cop every single second on every single road. And yes, there was complaints of, you know, out at Valrock, out at Happy Bear, okay? And there's complaints about, you know, noise or whatever, hot tubs in the winter. Short-term rental complaints about whatever, and they're getting the calls that they gotta go to Dean Hill Road. So I just gotta say, Ken, like when you say, they don't need to be on Dean Hill or Roaring Brook Road. I have to disagree with that because they get the calls that go there and they gotta be there. So if we really just wanna have a police department. So if we really just wanna have a police department that just sits on Killington Road.
And picks off the speeders, yes.
Okay, so that, so then I think, you know, grab a petition and say, I wanna have seven police officers for twenty-four, seven, and pick them off, okay? And, 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 and then you're gonna get the people that are gonna say at Killington East, I want protection over here because my house is getting broken into, or my car is getting broken into. So I'm sorry that you almost got taken out, and we're trying to do something. But the reason for this thirty miles an hour is part of this whole calming mechanism because of the walking traffic that is probably going to increase. We're trying, so, you know, I get it.
Even just painting the sidewalk, the crosswalks and doing these things.
Even if they're crooked, at least they get everybody's attention.
Believe me, I wanna calm down too. My family walks on Killington Road all the time, and it's, um, I wanna know that my family's safe too, and everybody. And it's just, we've got it doing, we're doing this one step at a time.
So tell one last question. Our folks, okay, our police force is tasked, okay, so when you have a special event like we did for the Spartan Race, why isn't that event planner, okay, tasked with bringing in, okay, some enforcement?
Because I would say to you, it's not their fault that the, the Bear Mountain Road washed out, and we shouldn't.
No, he's just saying, and I, forget about Bear Mountain, I, I hear, I hear you, Ken. He's saying, forget about it being washed out, okay? That when there's a big event like that, there should be, there should be something to the planner or whatever. And then I get to, and this is where I'm getting a little, I'm not, I'm not mad, but it gets a little, it gets a, like when I'm sitting here and you tell me especially that you were on the planning commission, but you're all, I think, and you were on the DRB, that's where it's supposed to come out of, and you should know that, that the planning commission does the planning or whatever. And, and then there's the DRB, the DRB has nothing to do with speeding, okay? The DRB is for, 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 for permits for.
You're missing, you're missing the.
But, but I pushed here for multiple years, a special events form, okay? It's, we finally fought, we finally got one filed, but that's a different conversation of, why isn't the right groups using it, okay? That's another conversation. So right now, we're talking about this.
The event should have come to the board, to the board, okay, with the Killington, and said, we're holding this event in your town.
We've known the Spartan Race has been here now for eight years, Ken.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Prove the pudding, okay, so you should.
And thi, and this is the first complaint that we have of almost someone being taken out. So in eight years, this is the first complaint that I'm hearing.
Do the right thing doesn't always make it popular.
Okay.
All right?
I, I'm a perfect, I, I'm a perfect example of that. Trying to do the right thing is not always the best thing.
Absolutely.
Sometimes you're better off just shutting up and not saying a word.
Well, I've done quite a bit of that my time.
Yeah, so we've taken in what you've said, and I really have taken it in. And I thought, like the conversation we had, where we want to go and saying, we need to try to get a little more patrol, and that's gonna be possibly, you know, working a police department the same way that we're saying working the fire department, okay? And maybe four with, three with a chief is not enough for what's expected from in our community at this time. I think they're expecting more service, and Chris has said this many times. You know, especially with people coming in now, we have more people coming in that are more full-time residents, and they're expecting to have services that sometimes we haven't had. And one of them, I think, is police, and the other one is fire. So you've got something tasked in front of you.
Budget season's coming up, we've got plenty of ideas to have slow down cars.
Yeah, so, and, and Wit, we've been, the, the board has been telling you to, but it's hard finding.
Well, that's a whole nother.
Well, that's why I brought up the state police, like, there's a huge gap there.
Chris, Chris, Chris Roy started, what, a year ago?
Yeah, about a year ago, yeah.
And, and now you got.
Took two years to find him.
And then you've got, but, so, but you sped it up a little bit. I didn't mean that. The process was a little.
Takes time, it goes in cycles.
The first, the first, to get the second to the third was two years, and now to get from three to four is a year.
Yeah.
Okay, so hopefully we keep on progressing that, that we can get another officer here.
And we're doing the scoping study.
And we're doing the scoping study on Route Four, and we're doing like in front of Town Hall, and then we're doing it in front of the Killington Road, so, you know. I get it, Ken, I just.
You have a gun, yeah.
Okay.
I have a gun again either, thank God.
Did another cruiser, by the way, has a hole in the frame, it can't be driven.
Okay, so, we're, 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 we've taken in what Ken has said.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you. So the other cruiser's down?
No, the old one.
Oh, the old one.
The one that Truman took or whatever, that the town sold to him for five hundred bucks or whatever?
You're saying the one out back or?
No, no, the old one.
The one on Truman's?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so he said there was one in the back here and just move it, and I think it's, you know, for certain events, but I don't wanna leave it there like they do out in California, everybody knows that trick. Move it around or whatever, if you don't have a police officer, you know, move it around. The, the radar thing and the speed thing, isn't that the thing that I keep on asking about, but it's been broken?
Yeah, so the other thing, you know, the whole equation is budget, that we're trying to stay within. But, uh, that radar card, yeah, it's about eighty-five, ten thousand dollar replacement.
And this board keeps on saying, Michael, that's a safety issue, and as Ken is saying here, we need a speed cart. So for eighty-five hundred dollars or ten thousand dollars, go get a speed cart. As a matter of fact, you know what, I'm gonna make a motion that the town goes out and buys two speed carts. Do I have a second?
I think we should investigate it first.
Wit, Wit and I, Wit and I have been working.
But I mean, this is how silly it is, because they do work, and we have one, but it's broken for how long?
For a while.
And you've been asking for one, for how long?
For a while.
Okay.
And we got speed bump, and we got speed.
And we're gonna end up ordering speed bumps, because I've been asking for them for like ten years.
We're speed humps.
We're gonna get temporary for River Road.
Is that Southern thing, you call them humps down there?
A bump is for a parking lot, no, that's, we researched, we researched. Bump is parking lot, hump is road.
Yeah, so, but we're getting that stuff.
Put those in, I love them.
Yeah, so, so we are getting there, it's just a little frustrating for me, Ken, too, that I know we have a speed cart in the back, and I've known it's broken, but I keep on asking, when are we gonna get another one? So.
I'd say.
Just bring it to us.
Yeah, this is, if we get a, feel like the things Woodstock has or whatever, figure out what some of those could be would be good.
Okay, so.
Or we could just put up the speed cart that's flashing your speeding, and everyone just thinks they're speeding when they come through.
With us.
On the side, so I don't get it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public works.
All right, Chad's up here, um, I, I didn't really.
Oh, Zoom uses, is that, Steve, you still have your hand up or you already spoke?
No, I'm just listening, it's good entertainment.
All right, you got your hand up, that's all.
No, I saw a hand up.
Oh, that's me.
Oh, oh, that, that's Michael's mouse.
Uh, yes.
It's in the right place for it.
Public works. We've got Chad lined up here, I didn't, uh, really describe on what exactly he'd be speaking about, but, um, mainly it's just to give a FEMA report, and then if the board has any questions for him about what's been happening with the foreman and the public works crew, then feel free to ask. So Chad, I guess you're up, I know you've had a couple of meetings with FEMA, you spent a little bit of time on East Mountain Road with them.
Oh, just a couple of meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, we met with them twice last week, um, going through the, the damage, and, and also looking at what the mitigation options were gonna be. Uh, just for a reminder for everybody, uh, you know, we, on July seventh, we had this storm event everybody's aware of, uh, and the damage was to six roads, East Mountain Road, Trailside Drive, Rim Road, Trail View, Ledge End, and Rim Road. Uh, and also, you know, we lost paved roads, gravel roads, culverts, ditches, and, and a lot of, some actual significant, uh, road embankment issues, um, especially on the lower section of East Mountain Road, where we lost whole sides of the area where, uh, we temporarily stabilized it, but we weren't gonna do those. So, to date, uh, we've completed our emergency repairs, which is basically just enough reconstruction to get the roads passable. Uh, and that expense was about eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Um, and we've had his money, we've already paid out, um, and then we've had to take a, a little bit of a break, down about four, five slides now.
Sorry, Chad, got ahead of me.
Uh, one more.
What's Spacy?
Gotta go down to about slide five.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I was going quick without the things up there.
That's Michael's now.
Yeah, it's Michael's dog.
Yeah, we had training.
We're no longer seeing Siberian Huskies.
Yeah, exactly. So the storm damage to date was eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Once you get to the point where the roads are passable, and the definition they gave us was two emergency vehicles passing on the road, um, we had to take a break to get, uh, our scope of work for, for permanent repairs. Once you start permanent repairs, you have to go to bid process. Uh, we've put out a, a couple of RFPs, uh, the pricing that we've gotten to date, uh, for the East Mountain Road repairs, which would include replacing the culverts in East Mountain Road, um, fixing all of the ditch work, uh, take, basically, we'll have to take out enough gravel to put in our, our, basically our top twelve inches of gravel, um, for permanent replacing, we will be reclaiming that paving and, again, and then, and then repaving in the spring. Uh, so, to date, that price we got was one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Uh, we'll be talking about that in the next line item, about when that will start. And then we also have a price for temporary paving. Uh, what we're hoping to accomplish from the ski bridge to Roundabout Road is to have the six culverts that are being increased in size to be installed, which means that we could then do a full width reclaim and put in base course for that section, and then doing patch and repair from the ski bridge down to Route Four. If we aren't able to get those six culverts in, we'll just stay with the patchwork at that point. But they do have to be full, we, we recommend full width, uh, paving patches because the issue becomes, when you start plowing and you have only a half a road paved, you have a lip, we're gonna be peeling those green up, so, um, this is all for full width repair. So the paving for the temporary for the, this fall would be two hundred and nineteen thousand, uh, which would mean, if, with those numbers staying static, to date, we've come, they're, uh, committed to two million, two hundred and two thousand. What's not included in that part of the price is some of the work we have to do on the side roads, which is, uh, road, which are culverts that failed or washed out and had to be temporarily replaced, that will be much larger structures because they qualify as streams. Um, there are seven large structures, including bridges and box culverts. There's three on East Mountain Road, one on Ledge End, which will be a bridge, actually two, two of East Mountain Road was, are, uh, scheduled to be a bridge, Rim Road is scheduled to be a bridge, Trailside Drive, one bridge and one large box culvert. Uh, and on Great Trail and Trailside, there's two arch pipes. The one thing to keep in mind, uh, three of those structures of the nine were not damaged, they were, they were inundated and traveled over. If you look at the yellow dots, represent the area, well, the, that's the areas where the structure, the large structures are gonna go. Um, you can see, you're looking at the ones on, my, my, wait a minute. Trail View is at the bottom, and they have the two, the three right there in succession, you'll see one, two, three. And then you have the two up on, one on Great Trail and one on Trail View, and then if you scroll up, there's three right in a row, those three all washed out, the two on the bottom, one's Rim Road, one's Ledge End. Those two are required to become bridges, both because of the ledge that's there, uh, the slope of the stream and the, and the width, you won't be able to get a box in there, the one on that crosses East Mountain Road is planned to be a, a box culvert. But the one on East Mountain Road that I'm pointing out right there, that's a box culvert, and the two arch pipes, the Great Trail and Trailside, they're gonna be a little bit more difficult to get approved by FEMA. They're, uh, considered a mitigation approval, which means that we have to show why they need to be upsized, given that they didn't fail in this event. They failed in the context of being, uh, overtopped with water, they didn't, they couldn't handle the flows, and they do run down into channels, and they got outside the, the normal stream channel, but they weren't damaged. All of the rest of them qualify by, by the means of, when you're replacing a culvert that failed, came out of the ground or got torn out, you can replace it, and if you have to replace it with something that the state says you have to do, that's in the regulations, that's a much bigger structure, then that difference is covered by mitigation. So those are kind of broke, and, and we will likely get those. The other three, we're gonna have to give a very good argument as to why they should be mitigated, and we're in the process of doing that design work right now.
So the three you're speaking of are those, the three on the blue?
Those are the main, yeah.
The ones on top. That, well, the two on the, the, if you start with the one on the left there.
Yep.
That's the one on East Mountain Road, that's the one that's scheduled to be a box culvert that did not sustain damage in and of itself, it was overtopped.
Okay.
The one, next one down is Ledge End, that one completely washed out, we had to put it, re, kinda reset it.
Yep.
And that one has to become a bridge.
Okay.
Um, and then the next one down is Rim Road, that one will become a bridge also with the same.
Same thing, okay.
So I have a, I have a thirty-six inch pipe, and the thirty-six inch pipe is completely full of water running through it, and it's not enough to handle the forty-eight inches of water that pipe that needs to be there, and because the thirty-six inch water went through, but the rest of the water went around it and ruined other things, even though because the inside of the pipe didn't get clogged. You have to prove to them that the pipe didn't fail because the water went around it and washed everything else around it?
The situation, and the best example I can give is the two up on Trail View, one, it's in Great Trail, one that's up on the upper part of Trail.
Yeah.
They're like, they're like thirty-six or forty-eight inch pipes. Right next to it.
Yeah.
Is the two ski tunnels.
Yeah.
Okay, and the issue is, when they overtopped, it found a place to go, and the tunnel didn't do damage to the road, okay? But it did flood that whole lower area. It's just, it's just a different argument that we have to make in order to have a good justification. He wasn't committing to anything on the visit last night.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And what do you, and what's the sc, cost and scope of all this?
If you, I'm going to say that the, what did I say, I think there's, I think there's four bridges. The four bridges would be something similar we did on Trailside back in like two thousand eighteen or nineteen, nineteen, uh, Thunderbrook, the pepper one.
Yep.
That was about, that, at that time was about three hundred thousand each. So, you know, we, I, we're at two point two million, we're gonna be north of four million, probably close to five by the time all this is done.
So when I walked with FEMA that day that we had the meeting here, and I was up on the road with FEMA, and basically talking about like the, the culverts in the, the, the towns right away, but driveway, whatever, and saying we're gonna up them, and they said, you could automatically up one level, okay? So, what, we had a, in, in, in Trailside or whatever, let's say it is a forty-eight inch, so what's the next level from there?
Well, I'd go to sixty, but I don't think, for that, for the storm design level, I don't know that that's gonna be enough, that's.
No, 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 but what I'm getting at is, so, they, they were saying right there and then, like you can up it to one size, whatever. What you're saying is, is that we probably have to go up maybe two more steps?
Well, there's two reasons. One is the flow was a little more than, than up one size. The other issue is, they all qualify as streams.
Right.
As soon as they hit streams requirements, you actually then go to bank full width, which means you have to have the bottom of the culvert.
What, what I'm getting at is, is that if there's a forty-eight inch, and they're saying, well, we'll let you, from this storm, FEMA's saying, or the government is saying, we wanna prevent these from happening in the future, okay? So they were automatically like, just go up one size, so forty-eight to sixty is gonna be X cost, but we may want, we may have to go up to a bridge.
Right.
I wanna know what the difference is between that sixty and the bridge.
We, well, we will know that soon.
Okay.
Okay, because actually, that's what they wanna know too. Because the issue is not that we can't upsize the culvert a little, that we're changing structure type, but it's because we're in streams. These nine locations have a different set of rules than all the other small upgrades.
Right.
Okay, these all have to get approved by the state. So what the argument is, are they gonna say, we don't think you should replace it at all because it's fine, or we have to go to the state regs, and they have to approve going to the state regs?
Gotcha, okay. Cool.
So, basically from a schedule perspective, our preliminary paving and, and, uh, and drainage, which would include, uh, getting as many ditches as we can done. which would include, uh, getting as many ditches as we can done, getting as many culverts as we can get in on East Mountain Road, is to have that done by November of this year so that it's at least paved and passable. Um, and then for next spring, finishing the East Mountain Road reconstruction, all of the culverts there, and all of the, uh, the larger structures at the same time. So our goal is to have these scopes all complete. We will have, hopefully, the, I don't think we'll have any problem. We know we have the schedule for the paving and one contractor to do the work on East Mountain Road. Will be done by November for the temporary fixes. And next summer, uh, we're working on all of the scopes and the designs for that work now.
And the Jersey barriers, that's what they're called, but will be removed by the winter time?
That is the hope. The only thing we'll have to figure out is we'll, because we would have to put in temporary guardrail in those spaces, simply because those five, there's five locations there that have massive washouts on the downhill side. If you wanna, we don't know if we're gonna have enough, enough for it to grab at this point. That's what we're gonna have to figure out.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And then Chet's also here because down the line.
Well, does anybody here have, you know, the, nobody has questions on that, right? Everybody, that was clear, what's going on? Police and fire understand what's going on?
Clear.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right. Let's go. Okay, so we're actually gonna punt on the East Mountain Road Creek, uh, reconstruction bid award. We're, we're gonna go back out, um, to do a seal bid process on both the asphalt and the, uh, remediation work to the culverts. Um, so we can bypass that for this meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Route four, oh, sorry, I'm stealing your show. So it, well, I could've lumped all of this done in, in director reports here, but the Route Four ERU sewer rate, I think it's most appropriate for Chet to speak towards that.
Okay.
So as you recall with last year, or may recall, uh, last year, we had a nine hundred dollar per ERU charge for the, the, uh, Route Four sewer. It's time to send those bills out again.
Mm-hmm.
Um, done a budget, um.
Do we have in here a budget?
Uh, did you?
Is it included in the packets?
I had.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 let me pull it up.
I don't know.
I've got it.
Okay.
Been getting a lot of emails here lately. Did you send it Sa- uh, Friday, Chet? Oh, I, I see it, I see it, I see it, yeah.
Sewer budget.
So, um, basically, I gave you the three-year progression of where the budgets have been. Um, this year, and I can't see from here, so.
Come on up.
I'm gonna move up. So we had a hundred and sixteen thousand in actual this year. Um, for a total, because we did not have much, the twelve thousand dollars for repairs. Most of the reason that is underfunded right now, as I talked to Simon Operating the other day, the one pump didn't come in, or we ordered two, we were ordering two new pumps. One pump came in, one did not. Um, we did not do the installation of either of them yet, which is where that charge was gonna go, and then out of the, out of the fund. So what that is, we are going to be setting the one pump before November because he did, was trying to save money to only use one crane for one day rather than have, have him come back. If not, we'll have to do the second one afterwards. So we're gonna be about what we budgeted for last year. This year's budget stays about flat, uh, with that. And basically, using the hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars and with the number of ERUs, 'cause we have some additional ERUs that were sold this year, you would have an eight hundred and thirty-one dollar fee to charge for the per ERU. Um, but with RICAV, which went to tax sale with the eighteen units that are now gonna be collected on, um, your actual cost per ERU will be nine hundred and thirty-three. And going forward, once that tax sale is completed next May, those will be coming off the roll. So that will be your normal average, so.
They'll be spending nine hundred, how many ERUs are within that district?
There was a hundred and sixty-four in this billing, but there's actually only a hundred and forty-six.
Because of that.
Because of that. So that's what, next May, there'll only be a hundred and forty-six ERUs.
Yep.
So I'm recommending just stay with the nine hundred and, and stay in that vicinity and just need to.
I mean, the RICAV aren't, they're not gonna go anywhere, so.
Yeah.
I would bill out at the hundred and forty-six units.
And that's, you know, so I was just recommending staying at the nine hundred even that we've had for three straight years and.
So you have nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety cents.
Well, you can, you can, I mean, last year it was, uh, eight twenty-one we budgeted, but we stuck with the nine just because we're trying to build the reserve fund.
I'm gonna make a motion now, we set the Route Four sewer at nine hundred and thirty-five dollars per ERU.
Okay.
I need a second.
Second.
Uh, on favor of setting it at nine thirty-five, or you say?
Aye.
Is there a chance that we might buy Ricky's, did these not use it?
Well, that's our hope is any of these developments, then we'll buy some. Over time, as we sell, we'll, we'll, we just will break the budget.
Thanks, Chet.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chet.
So it's set at nine hundred and thirty-five dollars.
All right, then we've got a bulky, oh, gosh.
Pickup date, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I must stop on that one. We got bulky waste pickup date we've gotta establish.
When do we normally establish it? It's the first opening day.
Where's the first weekend in November?
End in November.
First full weekend in November, yeah.
So, and that's usually when we switch our hours.
That goes to winter hours, the fourth, fifth, and sixth would be this year.
So it would be, well, that's not the first full week because the first, the, oh, first.
Full weekend.
Oh, full weekend. So we would be setting it for November fourth and November fifth, and then we, and we normally do the sixth on that Monday?
Yeah, we do the, the Saturday and Monday, then we add the Sunday at this event, and that is winter hours from then.
Right, so Saturday, the fourth.
The fourth, please.
Eight to four. Sunday.
Eight to noon.
Eight to noon. Monday, eight to four. On the sixth.
Okay. And question, does this include hazardous?
No, it does not.
Then we need to let people know that they can't be bringing that stuff in.
Rollin' County's always puts out a calendar for us that we get it from them.
Yeah, they don't, I mean, but it's been known, but we'll just have to make sure, and, and, and Ray, um, Jay is doing a great job. He'll put up on there, no hazardous material, so we just have to make sure. Well, and, and, and just so you know, like, this, you've never been to a bulky in Killington? It's not free dump day. It's bulky stuff like beds and stuff like that. You don't get to bring your garbage and throw it out for free that weekend, okay?
No big trailer full of, full of garbage.
No big trailers full of, well, you can, but you need to have your pass and you need to have your, your punch card, and you pay for that. There's no TVs, there's no, no electronics, there's no hazardous waste stuff, okay? On that day.
Okay.
Um, you need to have a pass to get in.
Yeah.
And, um, we allow.
Last year, they were setting it at the eight, selling them.
Yeah, they sa- well, the last couple of years, they've been selling them right there. So, um, condominium associations, if you're greater than eight, you don't get a use of the transfer station, okay? That's, that's a policy that's been in place. I'm just bringing it up because I got a phone call the other day from someone, you know, why can't I? And say, because you're in a condominium association that's greater than eight.
Yeah.
That's ridiculous, you know, okay? So just making sure that it's set on this meaning that, you know?
Yeah.
And, um, I think Jay has on the control. So we set those dates.
Good.
Here you go, the crease.
Crease, you're on.
Finally.
We only have one, uh, renewal, and it's for the Graybonnet Inn, and it's first class license. And they can either.
And they're up to date or you don't know because the way the stuff to, and the way the computer is. I make a motion for the town clerk to move forward with the liquor license for Gray, is it underneath Graybonnet?
Mm-hmm.
For Graybonnet First Class.
So.
He's out.
I know you can.
I can.
On there. Aye.
Staying.
Yeah. Okay, uh, I don't see anyone from GMP here.
Mm-mm.
So are we gonna table that?
We can table it.
Yeah. Yeah, all right, for them to make the presentation. This is the loan that was on the front page of the paper, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so.
Further explanation?
Uh, so really, USDA doesn't approve loans over ten million, so you're gonna have two loan resolutions here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the total's eighteen point three nine four. And, uh, tonight, what we're looking for is a, a resolution of the board, um, to authorize and provide for the incurrence of indebtedness for the purpose of providing a portion of the cost of acquiring, constructing, enlarging, improving, and/or extending, uh, the FY twenty-three Killington Ford, Killington Road Reconstruction Project facilities serve an area lawfully within its jurisdiction to serve. So you're gonna make that motion for two loan resolutions.
I'm gonna make the motion right now for the nine million dollar one, right? That exact motion for the nine million.
Yep.
Okay? And if you can just make a copy of what that resolution is, you've already read it off, so then at least we can get it to Megan so she can write it up as that way or whatever, even if it means making a copy and that, whatever. So my motion's on the floor right now for the first for nine million.
Okay, we need to know anything else about it?
Well, the second motion looks the same for the next.
Yeah, we'll just get this one.
No.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
No, there's nothing else we need to know.
Yeah, we can go into details.
It's thirty years at three point six two five percent.
Yeah. Uh, we're, we're working on a, um, a visual so that the public can see. It's gonna look better than what Jim and I put up on the board today, but we do have an artist, a qualified artist working on it. Um, and again, this is for the road project, uh, one A.
So I got a motion for Michael, you're, you're, we're making the resolution, he seconded.
Yeah. On favor of, uh, this is nine million, three hundred and ninety-four.
We're doing the nine mil, I said the nine million one, so just giving that one out.
Is this a separate one?
There's two of them, there's one that's nine million, and there's another one for nine.
Okay, so we're doing that one.
Okay.
That's what my motion was.
Nine million dollar motion, please say aye.
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 Okay, so the same reading that you had for the nine million, three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I make that motion.
Yeah.
Yep. Second.
That's it.
Okay, on favor, please say aye.
Aye. All right. Let's just make sure I get the right wording so we can get it into the minutes.
Oh, well. Cool.
Cool.
I mean, that, that's exciting, I mean, it's three point six two five percent. When we did this, started going on this, we budgeted a three point nine nine percent loan on this project. So we got better with interest rates going two times higher than where they were two years ago. And, and on top of it, at the same time, do we have Killington Forward on here or no?
Uh, I grabbed it in my manager's report.
So I'll save your thunder for there.
Oh, that's okay.
What do we got? Fire and police.
Yeah.
You guys are up.
Finally. Uh, and I don't have the report that was given at the other meeting. It had names and stuff on it, so. You guys. All right, so, um.
Wit, they, they drew stores, Wit's going, stores, Wit's going first.
Sure. Well, Wit's pretty easy, I won't steal his thunder, but, uh, he needs body cameras. That's what I'm talking more about, well, he's got body cameras, he need, he needs places to store the videos.
Right, so as you guys know, we got the body cameras through PLCT passing grant about a year ago,
Mm-hmm.
which is great, a lot of departments in the state are going that way. State plates are mandated now, um, to have them, and we now have them. So, um, we use every call, um, every interaction we have with the public. So what we discovered now, it takes up all the storage space, if you would believe, including computers and hard drives and everything else. So what, another thing that comes on board, we have to do redactions. Um, the software, I'm recommending it's cloud-based storage for that price, over five thousand dollars, I think it is, um, includes the software for unlimited storage for video, audio, and also allows us the ability to do redactions and stuff like that.
Why would you have to redact, is what interests me?
Um, so if we, let's say we're at a, at a business or something, there's people in the background that aren't.
Oh, okay, got it.
Something like that, or if someone's not dressed appropriately.
Got it.
Not wearing clothes or something like that, so, yeah.
Now, in Killington.
Yeah, take that away.
Yeah, and the reason Wit is here, uh, talking to the board about this is it's because it, it's a non-budgeted expense. So we just wanna get, we wanna make sure that we have the board's approval before making a purchase.
And this is only for a year?
Yes, there was another option, I didn't include it, it was over twenty thousand dollars. And since it wasn't, which is like a five-year, since it wasn't budgeted, I wanna start off small, at least to help us.
So, so was it exactly twenty grand for five years, or was it?
No.
Do you know what the exact number is?
Not in my head, I can still email from.
I mean, was it a break from the fifty-four, 'cause five years times fif- fifty-four hundred?
Twenty-five.
You, you know, five times five is twenty-five thousand, so you're twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand.
There's a little bit of break, yeah.
So I'm gonna make a motion to move forward with the five, 'cause you're gonna work it in the budget, so who really?
Yeah, I'm gonna work in the budget.
So go with the lower price. Why would we say, 'cause by next year, the fifty-four hundred could be six thousand, and the twenty, whatever, it could be twenty-six thousand. You're gonna work it in anyway, so.
We work it in at fall under two.
Is there a possibility of you grabbing what the real price is? Do you have it available?
Yeah, 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 I'll, uh, just do my announcement about new options.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, then we'll come back and make that motion while Paul's doing his fire department.
So real quick, um, yeah, so, you know, we've had some money in our budget, we put in last year from the officer, which we did find higher. His first day will be about a week from tomorrow.
Okay.
Where's he from?
He's from, uh, Rollin' County.
Cool.
Yep.
He's a sheriff, right?
Yes, he's, yeah, he's got some experience doing the traffic detail stuff and a lot of other types of things as well.
Although sheriffs have practice in the traffic.
So we're excited, welcome on board, he comes, and he was a town office staff the other day.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll go see if I can find that.
Yeah, and while Paul's doing his thing.
All right, we'll see. Okay, um, well, you know the history. So January, you, as a town, decided to go from an all-volunteer department and start transitioning towards a partially paid combination department.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Chief's position and Mark Foot's position are currently the only two full-timers we've got. And we are on a forty-hour per week, five-day-per-week basis. So that leaves a lot of holes, uh, at the nights and then the weekends. So we're looking at all the staffing models, uh, that are available typically for a fire department. The proposal that I put in front of the town is that we rip the Band-Aid off and we start with a twenty-four hour per day, seven-day-per-week coverage, initially starting with one firefighter per day on that shift. So in essence, uh, I would be hiring two new full-time people, putting them on a twenty-four hour on, four-eight hour off shift, and it would be elevating Mark Foot's position from his current forty-hour per week position also to a twenty-four, forty-eight. So doing that accomplishes two things. One is it allows us to get a trained provider out of the door. When a call comes in, we can get somebody out of the door within a minute. Currently now, in the nights, the weekends, uh, best-case scenario, we're looking at four or five minutes. So the second benefit to that is depending on the call volume, or call type, I should say. Uh, if it's a medical call of a severe nature, such as cardiac arrest or an uncontrolled bleeding situation, uh, that patient now has a chance of survival. And that four or five-minute difference means just that. The second thing is if it is a true fire call, getting the truck out and getting on scene quicker may allow a stop of the incipient fire before it becomes a, you know, a larger fire.
Would you wait and roll the truck until it's fully stopped, or would you roll with?
I wanna roll initially.
Okay.
If it's during the daytime hours, again, during the week, either my, you know, I would be here.
Mm-hmm.
So there's gonna be two providers right out of the gate. The volunteers, just as they have continued to do, would respond to the station and bring supplemental equipment.
Okay.
So the nice thing about this schedule is that during our off-seasons, uh, we've got at least one person on duty twenty-four, seven. So, the nice thing about this schedule is that during our off-seasons, uh, we've got at least one person on duty twenty-four-seven. We can augment that, as times get busier, we can augment either per-people staff, part-timers. Uh, obviously keep recruiting volunteers. Uh, the eventual goal of being able to staff preferably a three- or four-man engine company that is uh A E M T capable, firefighter two capable. And having that especially during our busy seasons.
So in your short time here, how do you, how do you feel the calls are coming in, and how do you feel the needs are?
First of all, the numbers that I was given initially seem to be off. Uh, I was told that this department responds to shade over four hundred and fifty calls per year. Since I've been here, if the trends continue, we're gonna be well over seven hundred this year. Uh, we've had multiple days, uh, not inside of Spartan, but uh, we've had multiple days where we've had multiple calls.
Mm-hmm.
So, and, you know, it's intermittent, we'll go several days without a call.
Yep.
And then we'll have three or four days in a row where we have two or three calls each of those days.
Mm-hmm.
So, and the real problem's been a lot, especially as we get into the busier winter season, whether or not we have two simultaneous calls. Cause then we're really, really stressed.
Yep.
Yes.
I kinda feel the same way, I mean, it just seems like we're responding to a lot of calls. And I, you know, a number of times I see trucks rolling, or, you know, just stuff happening, so I agree with it. That's why I asked the question.
I, I think what we have to realize is like, the previous three years, I mean, this is when the Sherburne Volunteer Corporation came to the board, okay? And said that they couldn't make the calls. So maybe the four hundred or four hundred and fifty were the calls that they were making, but there were a lot of calls that were coming up from Rutland.
Absolutely.
Now you're making, because of the way you've, the way we've gone with this hybrid, you're making, it's the same, I think it's the same amount of calls. It's just that a good portion of them was being taken care of from outside of this department.
Yeah, that may be true, but unfortunately now that you're a municipal department, it's truly town's responsibility to handle.
No, no, I know, I'm just getting like, when you were told four hundred and fifty or whatever, that's what calls they were making. They don't get, they weren't counting the calls that they weren't making.
Right.
You know? So, um, you gave us, I mean, the one thing I really, cause I saw the paperwork that you gave out, your recommendation and everything. And I think, you know, everyone talks about the fire department side of it, but each one of these firemen that you're talking about hold an A E M T.
Two of the three do.
Two of the three do.
And then the third, uh, person, which we want to put, would be, would be the opportunity to go to an A E M T school. That way we have, at the bare minimum, one A E M T on duty twenty-four-seven.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Good.
So we know it's not in the budget currently, and what's the ask for is, but we also know, Steve, that when we say it's for safety, emergency, or whatever. You know, we've gotta work it in, and we knew we were going this way with the fire department. So I'm gonna make a motion for, um, to move forward with the fire chief's recommendation for um hiring.
Hiring two new.
Hiring his staff that he's recommended in here. Because it's more than two, it's also moving the, the, the current Mark Foot to a different.
That's correct, he would go from forty-hour work week to a fifty-six-hour work week. And one of the reasons we're going with that particular schedule is to take advantage of the Fair Labor Standards Act, the exemption for overtime. Firefighters are specifically exempted uh up to a certain amount of hours in the fifty-six-hour work week. You don't, not incur overtime until after fifty-three hours.
Chief Ginther, you've got uh also about outfitting new hires with bunker gear and uniforms, can you expand on that a little bit?
Certainly. So, uh, for instance, Mark Foot already has new gear.
Mm-hmm.
He was given that when he came on board. The same thing would need to happen with the Bone Brothers, or any new hires. Uh, a lot of the volunteers that we have currently are in older gear that is reaching the end of its lifespan. So, uh, you combine that with the, quite honestly, the different characteristics of people, short, tall, big, small, uh, typically. We need to have them more customized, and a complete ensemble of that, and you see the cost there.
So I made the motion first to do for the hiring, you know, so I think you seconded, so.
Yep.
I would also like to point out one more thing in the packet that I presented to the town manager. One of the concerns I had is because we're now bringing people on uh into a twenty-four-hour, seven-day-per-week uh schedule. This building is marginally equipped to be able to do that. Uh, in the packet that I submitted, I identified a room right across the hall that we'd be able to use as an initial bunk room for up to three same-sex employees.
So Paul, I just, I'm losing like, I've been awake for a lot of hours.
We understood.
So the motion that I have is to approve the hiring, first, he's second.
Okay.
I'm in favor of the hiring as recommended by the fire chief, please say aye.
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 Now we can get into the.
And this is.
I'm losing.
Our three people on, I've gotta have support.
They need some ways to stay.
Correct, so I had the space inspected by the State Fire Marshal's office, and we found that we do not need to make any infrastructural changes. Uh, we're looking at basically having to add one addition to the alarm in that room. So, at this point, uh, especially now that, you know, you're approving the hiring, I need to see about getting the furniture for that room.
So now I'm gonna make a motion to accept the fire chief's recommendation for the, I guess it's temporary housing or whatever?
It ideally should be considered temporary, in that we do not expand beyond three people, and it also would have to be all same-sex uh employees.
So I made a motion for approving his plan for temporary housing.
Second.
Do you agree with that?
I am.
Okay, I'm in favor of the motion for temporary housing, please say aye.
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 So while we're talking about housing, cause I know something has come up, and, you know, Chris and I were here back during the storm, and you have a bunch of people, and there's, there's one, and I'm not gonna mention the name, but there's a fire, volunteer fireman that's on your department that we have allowed, like, to, to stay here at certain times. Can you run through what the fire department rules is for that type of housing?
So, in the absence of having a dedicated program to allow for uh live aboard people, so to speak.
Where we going to now?
Which we're going to now. Um, this is a unique situation in that this employee uh does not have a permanent address. So he has been living out of his car, and has been allowed some refuge here at the station to store personal items, while maintaining sleeping predominantly in his car. Um, the trade-off of that has been, he has been a valuable responder, and has helped me out with a lot of administrative tasks. So it's a, it's a unique situation. So, realizing that we are not a shelter, and that up until this approval tonight, we have not had true sleeping quarters. So that's where we stand.
And washing the trucks and?
Correct. Now, he is then invaluable, but his, again, his personal situation's a little unique.
I just wanted to get out there that we've known it.
Correct.
And but now we're moving towards this housing.
There's um, I'll just make a comment, there's something nice when you drive by here, and the doors are open on the front of our facility, and.
And I've got that feedback from a lot of community members.
Yep, but just, we don't look like a closed-up shelter. In case you didn't notice, it doesn't say fire department anywhere on this building.
No.
And there's no warning.
Budget coming up soon, so.
And there's no warning signs telling you that there's a fire department ahead either, so it's kinda nice to have the doors open.
And it's even actually nice seeing people inside washing them down when they're not out on the call.
Yep, I agree.
You know, there's activity going on in this, in this fire department.
And there's gonna be some um updated capital outlay too, that Chief Ginther and I present to the town here in, you know, the next couple of months or so, especially with budget season coming up. So there's definitely some needs, and uh, we're gonna get out in front of them, so.
So we approved the staff, and we approved the housing. Now, Police Chief Montgomery came back with and gave us, so we're gonna go scoot back to here, and on one of the pages here, this is, this is for the Motorola.
This page has the actual five-year number.
Right, okay, so it's twenty-one thousand, two hundred for five years, so you're paying the fifty-four, forty for the first year, which includes the upfront cost for hardware, accessories and implementation, plus the subscription fee, and then each year after that. So, I mean, I'd rather, at the way things are going up in price right now, I mean, I, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the five-year subscription for grand total price of twenty-one thousand, two hundred over five years, and work it in the budget each year. I mean, thirty-four hundred, thirty-nine hundred, forty dollars, thirty, thirty-nine hundred, forty dollars for year two is really not a big deal. Yeah, so, so let's just lock that in at this point.
Yeah, I would agree. You're not gonna stop recording.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
But that, that got the second from Chris.
Yeah.
I'm in favor of supporting the five-year uh questions, please say aye.
Aye.
Sure, in front of you, you've got the uh town financials, the budget comparative report, and the treasurer's report for the general fund. If anybody has any questions about it, I can do my best to answer it. We also have the treasurer here, so that's convenient.
I've had a lot of help tonight.
She usually leaves right after.
A lot of help.
You know, my, my only concern is, when I look at actual two thousand twenty-three, you know, we go, oh, seven million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and then I go to two thousand twenty-four, and it's eight million, one hundred and fifty, but I don't really know what that's like for apples to apples. And this is not your, this is not your report, yours is only here. You know, because our taxes went up eighteen to twenty percent, okay? So are we on target, or are we not on target? And like I said, I'm a little tired right now, but, you know, twenty percent increase on seven point two, I think we're a little under on how our receipts are coming in. So, I'm not sure, I just wanna, you know, I mean.
You're referring to the total here?
So I look at this, and it says on, on the first column, so revenues, revenues, taxes, the first page.
Yeah.
Okay, and it has FY twenty-twenty-three was seven million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, right?
Yeah.
Eight forty-six, okay? And then I go over here, and I see that the actual was eight million, one hundred and fifty. Okay, but we know our taxes went up like eighteen percent, okay? So that's eight million, five hundred and thirty-one. And, and I, and I just, so might as well get used to it now, it's, someone's gotta figure out a way of, that's not all municipal taxes.
The state.
The state is some eighty percent of. So, I don't know, there's gotta be a computer system. Because we've been told by many times that you can't because it comes all in one, because it all comes in as one check. But when someone comes in and pays their tax bill, on that tax bill, it says, how much is state, how much is municipal? And we need to take that extra step of entering into a system, when we get a tax bill, someone's paying it, how much was state, how much was education? And because, right now, like when you're reading this, Michael, it says, and this is not you, so it says.
Well, it's good for me to.
Yeah, it's for you, but it says municipal taxes, and it says actual, you know, it says budgeted for the full year, twenty-twenty-four, four million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Holy shit, we're doing great, we're only in the second month, and we're already at eight million. We're, we're, we're almost double. But because the majority of that is the state education fund, we, we probably only have, well, if we have three payments a year, a third of four point four million, right, is about a million four. So out of that, out of that um, eight million, a million four is municipal.
So I see, so I see what's happening here, that first line there, that, that first row is blank, and ideally, you would have it split, you would have two figures.
It was accrued or something.
Or just, just something like to give you more of a whatever, you know, that's, and I, and I say this like each year when we get this, so.
I'll look into it. I, I was wondering maybe if a balance sheet showed it, but.
No, i- 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 it's really the next step, and it's really hard, the question, you know, like, when you get the tax bill, it tells you the full year, and it really is so, but then we split it up into three payments, so someone would have to take the time and say, okay, well.
This much goes to.
This much goes to here, this much goes to there.
So this is all software-driven, I mean, you need to tax, and it's all done through the software, NIMRAC.
Right.
And I don't believe NIMRAC has the capability of doing that. There is software that does it, and you believe there is talent or truth that has it, it is quite expensive. Um, from what I understand, I don't get the call on it all that much, I've only learned by what I've heard. But that is a software issue, I don't know the mechanics of, you know, how much, how much work it would be when it's proven, I mean, you have, it would be very manual, I guess.
Right, yeah.
It would be very manual.
But one thing that we have learned, like when we started going to the TIF, and we went to a meeting that one time, like a year ago, with, I think you were in it, we were at the library, and we were talking to the NIMRAC person, cause he was, and it, that was the one where he didn't even know we were getting a TIF or whatever, and he says, and he started saying, oh, it's available, you just have to ask to get that portal open or whatever.
And it could be reported if they can run, maybe they can customize it, and that would be a question for NIMRAC to see if they can do something. There's gotta be a way, I feel there's gotta be.
So the meeting that I got, Michael, that I went like a year ago, was, NIMRAC can do other things, you have to ask them.
Yeah, they can come in and put code to the software.
Right, so, but if you see what I'm getting at right there, is there's an education line, and that's some eighty, eighty-five percent of the total receipts. But we're putting it all to, you know, the municipal line.
So I wonder what that four million, four eighty-seven.
That's bold, it, 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 it's, it's bold.
Strange it's so low, you know?
You know?
Uh, zoning administrator needs to get to work.
Make more money.
Well, it, it's down a little bit, went from fifty-three hundred to nine hundred bucks.
I've been tied up.
Alright, can you get some billing out, just to kinda get us back up?
But it has been a little slower, I mean, we, last year was like.
When do rental registrations?
What do you, what do you see?
Uh, reporting has slowed a little bit, they come in, in uh, in bunches now, uh, definitely, um, but because there's not a lot of inventory as far as we're taking over. That's the difference on mine.
Yep.
But it's steady.
And nobody's refinancing, we know that.
There, there, there are people, believe me.
We didn't have any mortgages to begin with.
I know.
Paying cash.
Yeah.
Um, and rental registrations, when do those go out?
Rental registrations, Linda just stepped away, but we were on the phone the other day with um, they just, they're just putting it out this week. Last year, we told them to hold off because we're doing changes of prices, and then some people got in at the earlier price.
But some people called you to tell you, by the way, guy, the price went up wrong.
Cause they, cause they put it in wrong, and they did it. So it is going out this week saying, please register for November, November one, so that, that, that money will start coming in here. And just so, you know, like, we've budgeted um fifteen thousand dollars for this year in zoning fees. I think we're gonna blow that out of the ballpark really quick with a couple of things that are just gonna come in from the village, and, you know. You, we were in a meeting this morning, right, and like, we're gonna be coming in and asking for, and there's gonna be site plan fees and a whole bunch of other stuff. At fifteen thousand dollars, it's, it's not gonna be a problem, you'll be saying, oh my god, later on.
Are they gonna get a driveway pit permit for fifteen dollars too?
No, they're not gonna get a driveway permit for fifteen dollars. Oh, so talking about, since we have the clerk here, the fifteen dollars for the driveway is just the fee for the recording. We get to set the price for the permit, just like everything else.
But you're not even covering your recording now.
I know.
Now you're recording three pages, not.
So now there's three pages for a driveway cut, we have to get out, it's.
Fifteen per page?
Per page.
Whoa.
Okay, which would really like, you know, we're putting the clerk through, and we're not paying them properly for their work. But on top of it, so all along, it's like it was statutory that you can only charge, no, it's statutory of the fifteen dollars per page. We, the work that the town manager and the road foreman, and now the fire department going out for these driveway permits.
Yeah.
That should be a decent fee on that.
I imagine we would set, set our own rate, and.
Yes.
And the expectation is our first meeting in October, I may have a revised draft of uh.
Right.
Cut.
Okay, so when we talked last meeting about getting a permit, driveway permit, and we said it was gonna be signed off by the fire chief, the town manager, and the road foreman, and then there's gonna be a revisit or whatever when it's finished to make sure it was built to. Well, there's the recording fee of three pages at fifteen dollars, so it's forty-five dollars for recording, and then there's, we have to talk about at some point the fee for the actual permit.
All right. I don't see anything else.
Uh, second page, oh.
Oh, are you on the agenda?
No, I was just gonna go to the budget stuff.
Yeah, no, I make a motion to approve the comparative budget report for the town, August.
Second.
Aye. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the treasurer's report, which includes the restricted funds also, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. On the town side?
Second.
Okay, I'm here.
Aye. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the Green Mountain National Golf Course comparative report. Second, and then we can just look through it quickly if anyone has any questions.
Second.
You know, I mean, once again, it's just, we know that it's been rating out up to period two of this time. Last year, they had total green fees of three oh six, we're at two ninety, so we're sixteen thousand dollars down. Um, the cart fees were only like six thousand dollars down. Membership passes were actually above.
Mm-hmm.
The range were actually above, whatever miscellaneous is. The rentals, a little above. Merchandise, four grand below. So the total, we are twenty-two thousand dollars below in the pro shop of what we were budgeted. I don't think that's really bad for the weather that we're having, okay? The restaurant on the revenue side, um, we budgeted eighty-four, uh, ninety-four, we're at eighty-one, so we're fourteen grand down, thirteen grand down on. Overall, we budgeted five fifty-one, and we're at five oh eight. How is it that, when I just read like fourteen grand off on one, and twenty-three, five forty? You know, that's right, it's like forty, forty-some thousand dollars off. So, I mean, on a half a million dollars, you know, I think it's better, I mean, we're like ten, less than ten percent off, Chris. So about eight percent, so I think that's in line with everybody is seeing. Some, some place is worse than that. You know, and then we get into the cost, expenses for maintenance. You know, I had this question the last time, it's like, you know, the wages for grounds were twenty-nine last year, and they're forty-six this year.
Didn't have any help last year.
They didn't have any help, okay. You know? Yeah, and then the pro shop, last year was eighty, this year seventy-seven, so, okay. They're making whatever there. And then, total restaurant, we budgeted, we're at sixty-one. So I mean, and then it's made up in a bunch of other lines, because we budgeted fifty, um, sixty-one, and last year we were at fifty, we're at sixty-one, and we're at fifty-seven last year. So just four thousand dollars off there. Overall, we're down like, on the net, we're down some, well, the total expenditure is three oh one we're at, and last year we were at two ninety-nine, so it's actually not looking bad for what season is out there. So I made the motion to...
Already started it?
Yep. So I approved, I had approved the restricted funds, the treasurer's report is in front of us.
Yep.
I'll make the motion to approve the treasurer's report for the town and the golf course.
Yep.
Do you need to add anything?
Second.
No, I don't see anything.
I'm favoring second treasurer's report, please, sir.
Aye. Since we have Lucretia here, about three or four months ago, when we were talking about these restricted funds, we tasked the town manager back then with taking some of these funds and doing what we did with the education tax the last time, where we put like three million dollars into a, a note that was going to, that got like four or five percent.
And interest on it.
Okay, and we had said we were gonna go through here and do some stuff, so if you two could get together. Because right now, like I'm seeing here, as of August thirty-first, we have eight point eight, nine, almost nine million dollars in the account, and there's, you know, thirty seven, three point seven million in restricted. When's the next time we make a payment to the school?
We're gonna make a payment to the district in the end of November, as well as the first payment to the state, which is going to be, um, I believe we are sending thirteen million dollars total to the state this year, so it's gonna be six million. So we're not in a position to make any way yet.
Okay.
It'll hopefully, February.
We might be able to do something.
Right, and that's about the time we did it last year.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but just for Michael to know that...
Yep.
Last year around February, we were able to put, I don't know, a couple million dollars?
Two million.
Two million into a, a six-month note?
Mm-hmm.
And we were able to collect the interest, which gave us somewhere like thirty thousand dollars.
That's good.
So, sixty thousand, oh, sixty thousand. You know, so, all right.
I got it, I got it here, schedule.
Go ahead.
Okay, so motion was there, and we're all in good, right?
Capital outlet?
Yeah, we've really been hitting it hard tonight, so I won't put it to you on this, but I just, I, I've been, I've, the finance managers come to me with some golf course requests, what they would probably consider needs. I'm just gonna talk about one tonight, and that's golf carts. The, um, the lease agreement is up soon, and, uh, you know, the course is gonna wanna know, you know, what direction we wanna take. Do we wanna just enter into a new lease, lease agreement and get new carts? Do, or do we just wanna, wanna hang on to the carts that we have for a little while, and then, you know?
So when we...
Start a new lease, and I'll just, real quickly, uh, there was a quote given to the town back in twenty twenty-two for a new lease agreement for new carts, and it was in excess of four hundred thousand. But then, with the return of the carts we have, it ended up looking around two hundred thousand. So, uh, that's, that's pretty much the update. The, the other thing that kinda, and this kinda correlates with it, the only thing, concern is too strong of a word, but I would say priority, is the facility maintenance building. Uh, I don't know if that's what it's called, but I think you get what I'm talking about. There on the course, does need some refurbishment. Uh, there's some pretty bad leaking, and that leaking has, has caused problems inside the building.
But that's a repair, and we should, that should just get done.
And we talked about that when we went there.
We went out there and met with them, and we're just like, fix the roof.
Yeah, yeah.
Fix it.
Yeah. So the, so the golf carts...
And I would say that if you, if you push back a lease, go ahead.
The carts have been there five years.
The last set of golf carts were there for seventeen.
I was gonna say fifteen, but...
I think it was seventeen years, the last batch. And when we went to replace these golf carts five years ago, the, the plan was, is to work in their budget, that they may have to keep them, it's like a dollar buyout or something like that, or whatever the buyout is. But we were like, we're paying like fifty-five thousand dollars a year or whatever on the golf carts in those leases. And we were planning on these golf carts lasting us like, at least seven, eight years, getting two to three more years out of it, which would help, because now they don't have the fifty-five thousand or whatever it is going to it.
But they could use it to fix their...
But they can use it to fix their leaking roof and stuff, because now they have it.
Without having to add anything to their budget.
Yeah, so, so we gotta remind them that, so, um, we're expecting when it came up, instead of just getting something that says, um, okay, the lease is up, and we need four hundred thousand dollars to renew another five-year lease, like the condition of the carts, we're not hearing any complaints about the carts.
Not yet.
So the last time, we went too long. If we're gonna replace them now, we've gone too short.
Couple of the service carts have had issues, but that's...
But they told, because we didn't replace them.
We told them that, and we said, you know, so...
The golf course lease is sixty, is, I don't get how this is. The golf cart lease in twenty twenty-three budgeted seventy-three thousand, nine seventy-five. It was a straight lease, and we've only budgeted in FY twenty-four, sixty-one thousand, six forty-five, twelve thousand dollars less?
Yeah, I'm not sure, Mark kinda tried to explain it to me, I think it has something to do with the, the ending of the lease.
Okay, all right. Okay, so that makes sense, it's a tower or whatever. But that's sixty-one thousand dollars that now, hopefully for two years, or three years, builds up for them to do some other stuff.
It's a need, so what I'll do is I'll just go ahead and tell them to get a pricing to fix the roof, and then maybe take some of the insulation down, and come back to you relatively fast, with the quote.
Do you have more managers' reports?
So I'm, I, you know, this is, I, I, I really like to kinda get in the spotlight and talk about all the things I've done over the last two weeks, but we've been at it for a while, so I'll spare you. Um, this report is available online for anybody to read. But I, one, one thing to add here, and that wasn't on your agenda, is that the town has finally gotten a loan agreement from, um, from SRF, and this is relating to TIF. Loan RF three, four fifty-nine dash two, this is for the water work. Uh, these loans are split up into three phases, one, two, and three. One is scoping, two is design, and three is construction. Okay, obviously, we haven't started construction, but we've been well into scoping and design. And the town would really like to reimburse for this money. Uh, it's six hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred dollars, and what I'm seeking tonight is a res- resolution from the board to approve that loan agreement.
So moved?
Yep.
Aye.
And I'll pass that around for everybody to sign here before we leave. Town hall, we're moved along with it, uh, no updates on when we're gonna be there, but we do have first floor drawings. We're trying to celebrate all the hard work that Lisa Davis and other staff has done on the, uh, on the TIF projects, and funding, and financing. And, uh, I think, you know, and, and even small stuff, so just so you all know, when someone comes to me with a concern, and I think I can fix it relatively fast, I do. So, you know, we were at planning commission meeting, someone said, hey, the light from the Pyco, some, you know, the Killington signs shine in the wrong way. Pretty quickly, I can send somebody out there to fix it. So I do listen to the public's concerns, and we, and if it's an easy fix, we address it quickly.
Okay.
All right, so thank you.
So who do you need to sign that?
Uh, the loan agreement?
Yeah.
The bo, the full board needs to sign.
Full board?
And I've got it, uh...
Does it need to be notarized?
It does, and that's why Lucretia's here.
Oh, okay. So while Lucretia's, why is it assigned? You know, I just wanna like something that may be in your report that you're going through, and the SRF, this is a six hundred and sixty-six whatever thousand dollar repayment coming back, whatever. But SRF, the IUP, you wanna go through that, just, just, was just, was just approved last week, and there looks to be like another, um, four million dollars coming from AWPer as, as one of the ladies, the lady that we're talking to about doing some kind of art thing for us. Instead of calling it a, a, a forgivable loan, it's a gift, four million dollar gift. Then there's a three point nine million dollar gift for the emerging contaminant fund that we don't have to pay back. And there's some seventeen point eight million dollars, or whatever, that's from a, seven, it's up there, that seventeen million, eight forty-six. We've got a total, it was eighteen million, eight forty-six, but one million of that eighteen million, whatever, is forgivable.
And this is our water draw.
So, so seventeen million, eight forty-six is a forty-year loan at no interest, zero percent interest. We'll only be, or, or the TIF district will only be paying the principal on that loan. And we were approved for that this past week.
It's huge.
So...
Yeah, we have the numbers here, so out of a thirty-two million dollar, uh, I'm using flat numbers, but out of a thirty-two million dollar project, six, seventeen million are subsidized.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, do you wanna make an announcement about the ribbon cutting tonight, or not?
Yeah, sure, why not, yeah.
Well, you're better at it than I am.
So October fourth, at, um, twelve o'clock, there's only like two pages for us, just to make sure you just sign. At, at twelve o'clock, there's gonna be a ribbon cutting slash first tree cutting on Route Four by the High Palm Station. That part of it is, um, invitation only people, town, whatever, and there'll be some state people coming. But at one thirty in the afternoon, one thirty in the afternoon, we're gonna meet down at the Welcome Center, and there'll be coffee and some snacks or whatever. There'll be the water plan with DeFrane's group there. Michael Snade with Great Gulf, and Katie, their planner and president or whatever, will be there. They may have some plans for us that they're moving forward with, and that's open to the general public to come on down. You know, we have asked the police department and the fire department to be on Route Four at that time, uh, because there'll probably be anywhere sixty, seventy people there. And, uh, we're gonna be getting a bus to bring down, but we'd like to get some, some lights on there.
And where are we meeting on Route Four?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna be first meeting at the bus at the Welcome Center and get taken down there.
Oh, okay.
And then come back, so we don't have fifty, sixty cars parked on Route Four slowing everybody else down. We'll just have the lights on slowing everyone down. So, all right.
Great.
Productive.
Yeah, so, anything else?
Anybody have anything that we didn't cover that you wanna bring up?
Keith Star has, Phil and Lolly's finished another class, about seven members went through and got their fullness first aid. Something like about seventeen out of twenty members that have the baseline, fullness first aid.
Great. We're not gonna get a call now, just, you know, everyone's so well-trained.
Oh, that's kind of a neat one. So this is the first grant I've, I've gotten since I've been in the town. This is the Municipal Energy Resilience Program Grant, and we got awarded to do a, uh, uh, energy audit on the new town hall building and the library. So, um, we've got an, the town has an intern that Lisa Davis-Lewis interviewed, and he's an environmental studies major, so he's really pumped about being a part of this.
Great.
So that's kinda neat.
Steve, do you have anything else out there at this last?
Yeah, I've been waiting, a couple, uh, two things. One, uh, I was hoping to, and I couldn't find it on the town website, maybe I'm not looking at the right page. Looking for the email addresses for like yourself, Jim, Steve, Chris, so I wanted to send an email out with a request. I've spoken to you, Jim, about this before, but the lack of cell phone coverage down on the golf course, down in that part of Killington, uh, it came to mind to me today, I was playing golf, I was by myself. I said, what if something happened to me? I'd be no way to communicate. Um, I look at that as a safety issue, in that, you know, we're in the twenty-first century now, people rely on their cell phones. I'd really like to see the town do something as far as putting cell phone coverage down in that part of Killington, in particular, uh, around the golf course.
So I've asked for it multiple times, we've given the suggestion over to the golf course or whatever. They went out and got pricing, and then, I mean, um, I'll push for it again, Steve, but I mean, I, I, I know I pushed for it like, two years ago, I think you brought it up, and I was pushing for it before then, because...
Yeah.
You know, I know there are, you know, and then it's two ways, there are some people like going to play golf there, because they know now they can't get a phone call, so they're not gonna be interfered.
I would play more golf if I could get a phone call.
But, but, but there are other people that are like, I can't play there because I can't be away from my phone. So I, 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 I'll, I'll take that back up again, Steve.
Okay. And is, are, do, does each individual board member have a, uh, email to the town?
I gotta swear, it's very easy to find my email anywhere on the... My phone, I mean, in the town report...
We don't have it connected on the website, not to the board members, but, um, like for planner, yes. Your name has a link to your email address.
Isn't it, is it in the town report?
No.
Perhaps I'm looking, I'm not looking at the town report, I'm looking at the website, and the website does not show email contacts for like you, Chris, Steve, or, or whomever, so...
So Linda, Linda... Linda, you got that for next, Linda's out for a couple of days, because we have a town fair thing up in Burlington.
Yeah.
But, um, Linda is on this call, and, um, she'll take care of that and find a spot to put it on the town website.
Yeah, wonderful. I wonder I can keep you guys honest?
Good luck.
I thought my email address was out there, and phone number was out there, everybody, just Google my name.
Yeah, well, I know where to find you, Jim, and I see Steve, yeah.
Yeah, so, is that it, Steve? Yeah, so, is that it, Steve?
That's it. Have a good evening, guys.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna say, um, make a motion to go on executive session for personnel. And contracts. Yeah, there'll be no action taken after.
Renewal or are we under discussion with this?
What's this?
Well, it says contract renewal. And I, it says executive session, Casella contract renewal.
Did I forget to take that off of there? Yeah, so Casella has given us a contract, so part of executive session is we could discuss the.
Yeah, so, I'm saying personnel and then, oh, yeah, now I get what you're saying. And contracts because there's a.
Yeah.
Casella contract in there that we need to talk about.